Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We are now wired in. We have our third overflow facility operational. Good to go. All right, I will call to order a meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. And to begin our meeting, I will ask Commissioner Hildebrand to do the invocation.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Boujack.
Reza.
Diaz.
Here.
Pakla.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Legrand.
Here.
Oliver King. Hennessy.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Sparks.
Reza.
Teal.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Burl. Ponstein.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Vice Chair Green.
Here.
Chair Stack.
I'm here.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. My apologies. I grew up as a preacher's kid. Invocation always came first.
Morning, fellow commissioners, staff, fellow residents of Kent County. I'm glad such a big crowd is here to hear my invocation. We should start today by thanking the Lord for this beautiful weather and, of course, all the personal blessings in our individual lives. Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we gain this important work for the residents of Kent County. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to better understand each other, and nurture the bonds of a community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect us and all those around us, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all the things we attempt to accomplish, are for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for service to others. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unerring, invincible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Ordinarily, we would move to special order of business, but we do not have one this morning, so we'll move right into public comment, which is the first opportunity that we have to hear from the public. The first opportunity is to address agenda items only. There'll be a second opportunity later in the meeting to address general jurisdictional matters of the county, but this is the opportunity to address only those items that are on the agenda. If you wish to speak, do we have a sign up, and you have the sequence? All right. So we'll go through those that have signed up first, and then I'll ask if there's anyone else that wishes to address the commission. I'm sorry, before you do that, I have identified, within my discretion, under the standing rules, that those that wish to speak will be allotted two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will call the names of the individuals up, and then I will also call the names on deck, so if there's anybody who is in an overflow room, they have a moment to get here.
That would be great. And if you are, quote, "on deck," if you can maybe at least line up in the aisle here somewhere, so I don't know how many we'll have here this morning, but we want to be as expeditious as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First up, we have Wyn Erwin. And on deck, we have Michael Browery. And my apologies if I butcher your name. Please forgive me.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Wyn Erwin. I'm chairman of Erwin Seating Company, and I'm also co-chair of the Ready by Five Steering Committee. First, I want to thank the county for being a national leader in recognizing the importance of quality early childhood development programs. As a 117-year-old family business employer headquartered in Kent County all that time, we see this as a long-term strategic investment in our collective future. The most significant benefits of early childhood investments are realized as children become adults because they are more likely to contribute to the local economy and provide stronger, a stronger pool of productive and skilled employees. We don't have to wait until then, until we know that it's working. We already have data that proves that our programs funded through Ready by Five lead to improved third-grade reading and math scores, an increase in families reading books at home, more knowledgeable and confident parents, healthier births, especially Black women, and early treatment for developmental delays and disabilities. Additionally, early kindergarten readiness shows positive trends. There are incremental increases in readiness among the children who participated in our millage-funded services compared to declining overall readiness, both locally and nationally, following the pandemic. Now more than ever, we need to intensify our focus on our youngest children. That's why we propose a slight increase in the count in the millage rate that would only cost the average homeowner another $150 or $2. With a small investment, we could extend these quality programs to more children in Kent County, further strengthening our community and our future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Up next, we have Michael Browery. And on deck, we have Tara K.
Good morning.
Say it again?
It's Kenzer.
Kenzer.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Hi, Kareem. Thank you all very much for being here, and thank you for giving me a moment to comment. I'm really pleased to be here today with my wife, my two wonderful boys, Kareem and Khalil, and I wanted to talk to you all, not as somebody who's an activist, not as somebody who has some great vision for how the world should be or anything like that, but just talking about the meat and potatoes of what Ready by Five and specifically the play and learn groups have done for me and my family. It's been really wonderful for me becoming a father. One of the greatest things has been getting to experience the world through children's eyes. And part of that is also the frustration of being a parent and trying to figure out, how do you have the world, how do you have children experience the world? One of the things that we've done since my son was around four months old is taken to play and learn groups. We knew it was really important after COVID, when kids weren't able to socialize as much, when they weren't in school as much, when they just had all that time where they, you know, didn't get what they needed to get ahead. So I was adamant that we were going to do that for my son. Because of the millage that our county passed, your voters passed, he had resources that helped him go from being a premature baby to being someone who's thriving now. I just want to point out to you guys a couple of important things to consider. There are a lot of things that you won't be able to measure. Some of them include the relationships I've had with other parents, just troubleshooting random things, things that would happen normally between neighbors, but you know what? We live in a time where neighbors are afraid to talk to each other sometimes. What I've loved is looking at the bumper stickers in the parking lot of the play and learn groups, because there are people who believe all sorts of different things, but the one thing they all hold in common is they love their kids. And it's really important that we think of this as something where we're investing in the future. So let's not waste this moment. Let's turn it over to the voters and give them a choice to vote for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is Tara Kenzer. And on deck is Kevin Clay.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all for having me.
They're very excited about you.
Is it because of him? He's so cute. Hi, once again, thanks for having me. I'm Tara Kenzer, and I'm a Ready by Five parent advocate. Here's my son, who recently just turned two. So we first attended all of the play and learn play groups, where we actually met our friend Kareem. And he worked with a variety of different toys, communication skills, and things he's going to need when he goes to kindergarten. And going to these play-in groups, I noticed that he wasn't developing at the same rate as the other kids with talking and communication. And so talking to other parents, they told me about the ages and stages questionnaires through Family Futures, which I then filled out, and noticed that he did have a delay with the ASQs in communication and speech. And through all of that, Family Futures then helped me connect with Early On, which I hope you all are familiar with, to get my son the help he needs. And things like that are crucial for children and families such as mine, so he doesn't end up in kindergarten not ready with the skills and the things he'll need for the future. Oh, my child. Sorry, we need to hold our stuffed animals, our emotional support. So when I talk to other parents...
You could have gotten four minutes out of this, buddy.
When I talk to other parents at these play and learn groups, they all say how thankful and how beneficial it is for their family and their children and their communities. So building their sense of support and friendship, there's even a play and learn group that is with kids with, I know you want to push the button, with therapy needs. So one of the play and learn groups, there's actually speech passes, OTs and PTs, that you can speak with directly if you need some help at home, which has been fantastic. I hope you let the voters take it in their account. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kevin Clay, and on deck, Tanya Ingram.
My statement is not going to be anywhere near as adorable as Tara's, so I apologize in advance, team. My name's Kevin Clay. I'm the owner, president, CEO of Pritchard &amp; Clay. I'm an automotive parts manufacturer here in Grand Rapids. We've got about 600 employees here locally. I'm also the chair of Talent First Early Childhood Community and a First Steps Kent commissioner. One of the things that brought me into this is I'm actually a former owner and operator of childcare centers in the Kalamazoo area, and it's one of the things that I remain really passionate about. And this, I know firsthand that this is an issue that has a profound impact on multiple generations of our current workforce and obviously the future workforce. One of the biggest issues that we have at Pritchard &amp; Clay right now is absenteeism with employees, and it especially affects young women. And it affects young women's ability to come to work and their ability to then advance and work. And that is because we don't have enough good childcare spots. As we all know, generally, the childcare falls to the women to take care of, so that is something, that is a major hurdle that we're facing right now. Pritchard &amp; Clay is about 45% female working. We're very proud of our diversity, and we work very hard to sustain that. We need your help in that. These programs that get millage funding are evidence-based, and they have research, and it clearly shows the long-term benefits to the child, family, and community. The investment ultimately saves money. We need to not only sustain what we've built, but we need to address the growing childcare crisis in our growing community. And we're blessed to have a growing community because that means our community is getting younger. The Grand Rapids Chamber right now says affordable childcare costs Michigan's economy about $2.8 billion every year now. Obviously, we're not going to be able to solve that with a local millage, but we can make meaningful improvements right here in the community that's most important to us. Additional funding would help the infrastructure to grow the early education workforce, to better connect families with open spots, and to improve the quality that's important to all of our families. This will be a missed opportunity if we don't sustain and grow current programming and expand to include childcare, one of the biggest challenges facing families in our local community.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tanya Ingram, and on deck, Lou Chamberlain.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Tanya Ingram, and I am a parent to a one-year-old daughter. I'm also the co-chair of the Ready by Five Steering Committee and a former member of the Resident Proposal Review Board. As a member of that review board, I've seen how much scrutiny each and every single program has to go through in order to get funded. In addition to that, we've seen, I've seen how these programs have to have proven outcomes and that the organizations are held accountable for doing what they say that they are going to do. During these review boards, parents have the most important voice. The programs that get funded work for families and support to empower parents. My family has benefited from a number of Ready by Five programs, from developmental screenings to play and learn groups. In addition, most recently, we've gotten support with reducing lead exposure in our home. My daughter had a lead level that was 3.3, and 3.5 is considered hazardous. I got involved in advocating for Ready by Five because I've always been a big believer in investing in our community and giving back. Now that I'm a mother, I understand that there is no better investment than our kids. I feel blessed to live in a community that is supporting children early, and I hope that we continue to increase the investment so that more children and their parents can benefit from the way that my family is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Lou Chamberlain, and on deck, Reverend Lynette Sparks.
Good morning.
Good morning. Lou Chamberlain, chairman and founder of the West Michigan Whitecaps, co-chair of First Steps Kent, co-chair of the Talent First Early Childhood Working Group. So I was here in front of this board six years ago when you voted to put the Ready by Five millage on the ballot for the first time. We appreciated that very much. I appreciated that partnership then with the county, and I've grown to appreciate it even more as we've worked together over the last six years. What first got me excited about early childhood, and you've heard me say this many times, more than 20 years ago was the return on investment. But it's not just the return on investment, it's also the good that we do for these kids as they're starting out in life. So, once again, as I've said a million times, it's not just the right thing to do for our kids, but it's the smart thing to do for our community. This time, we've come to you with a proposal for a modest increase because data tells us that the increase is needed. More than 12,000 children and expected parents participated in programs funded by the millage last year, which is great. But we know there are another 10,000 to 12,000 children that need these same programs that don't have access to them, in large part because of lack of funding. We also know that there is a huge unmet need with childcare, which Kevin just referred to. We have only 30% of the childcare slots we need in Kent County for babies and toddlers. We wouldn't have requested an increase if we didn't know that we have data that shows we've done, what we've done thus far is working, and if we didn't know that there's significant unmet need and that increased funding would move the needle. I believe we've shown that we need that. We, whatever is decided here today, we're going to look forward to working with the county going forward on the Ready by Five millage. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, you should know that this is on an automatic clock. I'm not pushing the button on you guys.
A very important clarification, Mr. Chair. Next up, Reverend Lynette Sparks, and on deck, Megan Cottrell.
Good morning.
Good morning, Reverend Lynette Sparks. No relation to Commissioner Sparks. Resident of District Eight and senior pastor at Westminster Presbyterian Church downtown and also on the Board of Together West Michigan. So first of all, would everyone that's here with Together West Michigan, please rise or raise your hand if you are here, just so you can see who we're representing? And then, would all the faith leaders please stand or raise your hand? Thank you. A writer said, "Everybody's for democracy in principle. It's only in practice that the thing gives rise to stiff objections." And isn't that the truth with so many things, like exercise? It's a great idea until I have to do it. Democracy is a great idea until there's tension, a word that we love to hate in the Midwest. We would rather say, "Oops, sorry," and just move on. But tension is not a dirty word. Democracy includes both disagreement and compromise, and that is part of our birthright as citizens of a democracy. And that's what Together West Michigan is about, the practice of democracy toward the common good. And when we disagree, it is not a personal attack. There are no permanent friends, there are no permanent adversaries. We will work with anyone on issues that we care about, even if we have absolutely disagreed on things in the past, and we will push because this is that relational work of democracy. So this is the opportunity to do something more than what we have done, even if it's not everything, and part of democracy is the vote. So we are urging you to give the people that you represent, 75% of whom supported an increase in the millage in a poll, the opportunity to vote for themselves. Let the voters decide.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Megan Cottrell, and on deck, Corey Puskas.
Good morning.
Hello. My name is Megan Cottrell. Hello, my name is Megan Cottrell, and I'm a member of Together West Michigan through Park Church UCC. I'm also the mother to two children. In my house, you have to eat your vegetables before you can have dessert. We teach our children that responsibility means putting the essentials first, and the fun stuff comes after. Some of you seem to have forgotten this. For the last two years, Together West Michigan has been listening to the voices of families in Kent County, families on childcare waitlists for years, paying more for childcare than for their mortgage, families unable to find a safe place for their kids to be while they work to put food on the table. Workers who care for our children are stressed to the max, and they are struggling to make ends meet. The whole system is on the verge of collapse from multiple angles. An expansion of the Ready by Five millage would allow voters to choose to put additional money to help fund this broken system that's the foundation of our entire economy. But again and again, both publicly and privately, you've said no. Many of you haven't been so resistant about downtown development. The same commissioners that said no to additional childcare funding have already voted to hand over $15 million from a potential lodging tax for new downtown projects, like a soccer stadium and an amphitheater. Commissioners, we're not in the midst of a sports stadium crisis, we're not in the midst of a music venue crisis, but we are in a childcare crisis, and we need you to check your priorities. Together West Michigan is not against more and better downtown development. We are for economic development and the well-being of families and children. And that's why we believe it makes no sense to ask families to support more downtown development without corresponding support for childcare. It's time for Kent County to eat its vegetables and then dessert, not the other way around. Let voters have the opportunity to expand our childcare funding in Kent County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Corey Puskas, and on deck, Reverend Greta Jo Seidel.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Corey Puskas, and I'm a member of Together West Michigan through Fountain Street Church. I'm also a child and adolescent therapist, and most importantly, a mom. One reason that we are hearing to not let voters decide to expand childcare funding is it's not the county's job. And we agree that the state and business community can do more, and we are happy to work together on this. But it makes no sense to pass up an opportunity that is literally in our hands and has a 75% polling support, especially when the alternative is to hope that someone else will act. Try Share is a great program for helping families with cost, but it doesn't open up more childcare slots to close the gap, okay? Universal Pre-K is a great step forward, and it's not going to cover children zero to three. It is also awaiting funding. Expanding Ready by Five won't fix the whole problem, but it would certainly help, even access state money that is being left on the table. If the county can only do one tax on the ballot because two taxes in an election year is too much, we should always prioritize our children over stadiums and downtown amenities. Thank you.
Next up, we have Reverend Greta Jo Seidel.
Yeah.
And on deck, Kenzie Channing.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Reverend Greta Jo Seidel, and I am a parent at EverBlue Montessori and a local clergy person. And I have heard from folks in this room and beyond that more study is required before this action can be taken, and I have to disagree. The Illinois State Facilities Fund released a report specifically about Kent County in October 23 showing that our county is 20,500 slots short of spaces for ages zero to five. The Michigan Chamber of Commerce study released last year shows that a lack of childcare costs our state $2 billion in economic activity a year, and that it called for action. The Kent County Big Sort, led by the county administrator last year with over 100 local experts, ranked childcare as the top concern, not just now, but for 25 years to come. This is a legacy-making issue. Another survey by Vibrant Futures underlines how much it costs us to do nothing, and Ready by Five data shows that their programs have a 75% poll rating. That one. The studies are clear, they're real, and they are actionable. They're right here. It is irresponsible not to allow voters to decide to support more childcare. I also have a letter signed by 17 faith leaders in Granville and Wyoming supporting the expansion, and there are 1,400 or more of these cards by people who have committed to being childcare voters. That means they're voting on these issues, and they're voting on you. Together West Michigan is prepared to engage thousands around this issue, our members, and more. For the sake of my children, all these children, and all the children in all of your districts, let the voters decide.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kenzie Channing, and on deck, Daniel Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Kenzie Channing, and I live in Fulton Heights in Grand Rapids in Kent County Ward 19. I have a daughter and a baby on the way, and paying for childcare for two kids is something that keeps me up at night. I'm here to share some numbers with you and anecdotes from my life. We spend .75 mils on incarceration in this county. If we increase childcare millage to .45, we have an opportunity to reverse that number for future generations and stop incarcerating our community so we can focus on building kids right from day one. The cost of childcare is equal to, and oftentimes more, than the cost of housing for families in this county. Add groceries and car payments to that mix, that's more than an income, and that's really hard for a lot of families to swallow. Numerous research studies show that investment in early childhood education is the most sound way to build that strong community that we're all wishing for someday. It is the answer to a better democracy, and it's uniquely American to think that people should do caretaking on their own. Simply put, when people feel cared for, they will stay in Kent County. Subsidizing childcare is a sure way to make sure that parents, and women in particular, can stay invested in the economic development that is happening in this county. When you remove me from the workforce because I can't afford childcare, that means I lose my ability to spend my money locally. Paying for a trip to the zoo, which gets 2.42 mils from the county, that opportunity is taken away. Supporting a food truck at a local community gathering, those opportunities are taken away when I am removed from the workforce because I won't have childcare opportunity. So I encourage you to please let voters decide to raise childcare mils for our county from .25 to .45 to make sure that the future of our community is sound from day one of a child's life.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Daniel Scott, and on deck is our last card, Annalise Contras.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Stack, commissioners, staff, law enforcement. Appreciate your work that you do, and of course, fellow citizens. Daniel Scott, longtime resident of the county, but more importantly, my real identification is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. May I address the proposed increase to address juvenile crime?
I'm not sure what that means. You know that it has to address an issue that's on the agenda, so if it addresses...
I thought that was on the agenda. Two dash 22, 24, 26.
Oh, all right. I know you'll find a way to make it work.
Well, yes, violence is increasing and it's increasing with our youth. We see that all the time. And as I've said here before, according to the Holy Scriptures, one cause of this is destroying and murdering babies in their mother's womb. This is what it looks like.
I'm sorry, you have to address us, Reverend.
I see other placards.
But they're addressing us, though.
All right. Can I do this?
You can. I'm sorry. Public comment works this way. The public has a right to address the commission. Everyone, whether you agree with them or not, has that right to do that. This is his opportunity to do that and he has a right to do that.
Thank you, Chairman. If we would do all we can to stop this genocide, this murder in the womb, we're talking about children zero to five. As I was here last time, Scripture says, "Life begins at conception." If you agree with this, the murder of children in the womb, now out of the womb, according to Lansing, you're an accomplice to murder. You vote this way, you're accomplice to murder. It's happening all the time in just several blocks from where we're standing right now in the hospital, in the hospitals. I appeal to you, speak up for those that are most vulnerable, that have no voice. Stop the murder of children in the womb, which people call abortion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Annalise Contras.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Annalise Contras. I am a Grand Rapids resident and I'm a parent of three children, seven, five, and two. I'm here to urge the commission to reconsider the rejection of the proposal to increase the millage for Ready by Five. As many have said today, the reports and data are clear. Kent County has a huge shortage of childcare slots for children ages zero to five. The recently referenced IFF report found that there are only childcare spots for 60% and there's a gap of about 20,500 slots countywide. Since 2019, the Ready by Five millage has greatly increased childcare spots available and there's still a long way to go. This is an urgent matter that requires increased funding and solutions. I have personally experienced the impact of this critical shortage firsthand over the last five years as a working parent in this city. My children have attended a small daycare center, which is on the edge of Grand Rapids and Wyoming. The director of the center is absolutely wonderful. She's so committed to providing high-quality and dependable care in an area in which there is a shortage of available spaces. But she has faced so many challenges with running a childcare center in this county over the last several years, including severe staffing shortages and turnover. The whole center or specific rooms have had to close for weeks and months at a time due to staff illness and turnover. We have stayed with this center because we love and trust the director and because waiting lists at other centers are so long that I fear we would not have a spot elsewhere. Undoubtedly, as many have spoken to already this morning, the childcare shortage is contributing greatly to the worker shortage as parents and caregivers cannot work without reliable childcare. Additionally, because of the shortage of preschool spots through state programs, we have paid out of pocket for our five-year-old to go to preschool for the last couple of years. And as you can imagine, this carries a hefty weight. I urge the commission to please think about what the cost of not acting is now. How much does caution cost born by families and children? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of our cards.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the commission on matters that are on the agenda only at this time? I do not see any. I do see...
All right. I wasn't supposed to speak, but I'll speak. My name is Daniel Alonso. I'm actually a resident of Kent County for about six years, originally from New York City. Met my wife in New York City and moved to the Bay Area and now we live in, been here and we have a daughter named Eva, so. Why do I want to talk? Because I want to tell kind of a little bit my story. So my parents, well, my parents, when they had me, they had a choice of like what to do. They're both working parents, so they decided my dad to work at night and my mom to work in the morning. Therefore, no childcare. Well, my dad was my childcare, but he would fall asleep and tie me to the bed. What my mom used to tell me is that she would leave three bottles in the crib and I would end up crying, but I would end up throwing the bottle out of the crib. What ended up happening, after my brother was born, my mom decided to stay home because it's two kids, but long story short, I had developmental delays. I was not able to speak. I stuttered. I had problems. I failed out of college many of times until I decided to get, to really get serious and got my engineering degree from Grand Valley State University after being rejected about four times. So I say this because you might not see the importance of the millage, but it is important because if I had care, I wouldn't have cost money to the government of taking it out and failing and failing and failing until I was ready. This is my daughter Eva. She's not part of that problem. She's actually the opposite of me. She's able to talk. She's able to tell me exactly, told me to get my coat out. And she's only turning two weeks in two weeks. So the millage is working. We take her to play and learn and it's amazing that a year, she was almost a year and she crossed the street just to talk to another kid, you know? So this is a good way to, I applaud you to expand the millage, help our most neediest. They don't have a voice and this is why I'm speaking, because they need a voice as well as other people here. So thank you.
Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Grace Cole and I'm a Healthy Housing Specialist at Healthy Homes Coalition of West Michigan. We are a Ready by Five funded organization. I've been working there for two years and I cannot tell you how important this millage has been to the community of Kent County. We specifically work with families experiencing environmental hazards, specifically lead poisoning. And I can say that childcare, early development prep, and play and learn groups are such an important part of counteracting the effects of lead poisoning. As many of you probably know, lead poisoning can lead to developmental delays and we also see higher rates of incarceration of children who have experienced behavioral problems due to lead poisoning. This millage increase would close an extremely important gap that we are seeing with positive reinforcement of social development. I urge you all to allow voters to make the choice to fight for our children in an even better way than we already are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, we will move to the next item on our agenda, but...
We're gonna say something.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know if you were taking it out or coming out. Yeah, I know, I know. I don't have anything prepared and I wasn't actually planning to speak, but I will for just a moment because I continue to join things. My husband is regularly rolling his eyes at me for engaging in one more thing, but I recently joined the campaign for childcare.
I'm sorry, can you give us your name?
Megan Coburn, sorry.
Not Megan.
Mama, I'm Mama Coburn. Sorry about that. And so I just wanted to say again and again across every place, every mom group that I'm a part of, every time that a vote comes up, it's regularly heard that we just don't hear from the parents. And I'll tell you why. It's because we're exhausted. Like, we're too tired to come to these meetings. We're too tired to be able to keep up with it. I do work and in fact, I actually quit my job just two and a half years ago to join my business now to be much more, sorry, to be much more fluid with my childcare circumstances. You know, I'm from Genesee County originally, born and raised. My husband and I both, we went to high school together, we're that annoying story. We got married. We came to Gran Rapids to go to Grand Valley State. We both graduated. And then we were also the story where we left. We moved to Florida where the job opportunities were. We also graduated right into the recession, so those jobs were short-lived and his job in engineering, the stable one, I work in advertising, was going to go to China. And so we were like, where in the world are we going to go next? Like, where's the next job opportunity? And we loved Grand Rapids. It always felt like home despite the fact that we were born and raised in Schwartz Creek. We came back here. And so we live in the city. We live in the historic district here despite also having two projects and children. We have a six-year-old as well. He's at school this morning. And so, catch my breath. This one is going to be four in April and when he, April 2020 is probably important to note, so right on time. Because of that loss of childcare during COVID, we opened a school at Ever Bloom Montessori, which has several members here today. And so I just wanted to say, please, just let us vote. Like, we are tired, but just let us vote. Let us vote for this year. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? If not, we will move to the next item. But before we do that, let me just make a comment. Obviously, there are a lot of folks here that believe passionately about issues. I was informed that we had a verbal altercation in the back between citizens that don't agree with each other. That is not acceptable. If that happens in this process and in the meeting, I will recess and we will clean the room. That's just not acceptable. So please, respect everyone else in this room, whether they agree with you or they don't agree with you. Thank you. All right. Next item of business is the consent agenda and I will call on Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move to approve today's consent agenda.
Is there support supported by Commissioner Boujack? Any discussion, questions, comments with respect to the motion? I see none. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Boujack, Diaz, Pakla, Wooden, Baker, LaGrande, Oliver King, Hennessy, McLeod, Sparks, Teal, Breevy, Coleman, Burl, Ponstein, Hildenbrand, DeBoer, Merchant, Antor, Vice Chair Green, Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 a's, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Well, that was easy, wasn't it? Let's move to our next item, which is the resolutions, and we'll start with Resolution 8A and I will call on Commissioner Hildebrand again.
Two in a row. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move Resolution 2 dash 22 dash 24 dash 25, the request for early childhood millage brought to us by the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Breevy? All right. Any questions or comments on the motion? I see none. Obviously, I'm kidding. All right. Commissioner Baker.
Thank you, Chair. And also I appreciate everybody that came out this morning. I thought a lot about how I wanted to discuss this this morning. Politically, I know people know that I've been, I was on the GRPS School Board, but I know a lot of people in this room because of the political advocacy I've done with Grand Rapids Public Schools. For instance, I know Commissioner Hildebrand and County Clerk Possumus Lyons and County Treasurer and the County Drain Commissioner because I sat in their offices with GRPS folks years ago asking for resources for children. I know Commissioners Hennessy, Wooden, Hildebrand, LaGrande, Sparks because of work on this. In my own personal community work, serving on the Board of Granville Avenue Arts and Humanities, supporting the Hispanic Center, currently serve on the Board of SLD Reads which supports children that have dyslexia. I give money to Kids Food Basket, Wemcat. In my own community, the Baxter Neighborhood Center, which is a huge advocate for children. I've sat in numerous meetings over the last 15 years at the Grand Rapids Chamber of Commerce with discussions with Doug DeVos and Mike Genonow and Kennedy and others to support resources for children. In my professional life at Ferris, my students since, you know, 20 years ago were doing research around early childhood at Macosta Osceola Intermediate School District and more recently, I've served on early literacy programs on the Macosta Literacy Center. And personally, I came to Grand Rapids a little over 20 or so years ago. I had young children. My daughter is 20, is turning 25 this year. She has a master's degree. My son will graduate from college in June. And, you know, that might seem obvious for myself being a college professor or their mother who is, has a master's degree, but when we came here, I recognized really the precariousness of my children's lives, even though I certainly, without my education, regardless of my education, I had no manual on how to raise my children. I had no family nearby as lots of folks that have come to this community because of the economic opportunities here. And even with all of those resources, and I, even though I had a good job, was having a hard time paying the bills. I was fortunate that my children got into Ottawa Montessori that was funded by the Great Start Readiness Program 20 years ago. This is the kind of stuff, and I, and then later on when my son was diagnosed with dyslexia and I got him into SLD Reads so he could learn to read. The precariousness of children of all economic classes is very much real in this community. And now I have a chance to throw out an opportunity to increase support and I can't not take this. And I, I, I respect, I spent a lot of time with Commissioner Boujack yesterday, others. I understand the positions. I think that as Commissioner Hildebrand prayed this morning, we need to have a meaningful discussion. I have not been engaged in any discussions with this commission on this particular issue and from my vantage point, it's the most important issue that we've taken up since I was elected. You know, I say, so I say all this to give, I can't not put this forward. I understand that and I don't want to put my colleagues in a tough position if they don't agree with an increase. But at this point, I, you know, I count maybe eight or nine people and we need 11 and it's worth a hell mary to put this out there. So with that, I'd like to offer an amendment to the resolution to, to increase on the millage from, instead of .25 to .35. And I've prepared written copies, actually thank you to Corporate Counsel Hal for getting this ready for us.
I'm sorry, a point of order. Can you get it? Let's get it supported before we distribute support.
Okay, sorry. So I propose amendment.
Well, that'll take long. It's supported.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Now I'm sending this off. So this would be, you know, a slight increase from where we are discussing at .25. It does not meet the request from Ready by Five for .45, but I believe it's a good compromise. And I'd like to have a discussion and consider it a possibility to increase this for the ballot language. So with that, and again, you know, I put this forward with respect for my colleagues to have a meaningful discussion and not to put anyone in a difficult position. So with that, all in my comments.
All right. Thank you and thank you for the courtesy of giving me advance notice that you were going to make this motion this morning and presenting it in written form. I'm going to conclude that the deliberation of the body on the motion to amend and the underlying resolution will take place altogether. They are inherently connected. So while we might otherwise go through a series of debates on the motion to amend and then reopen it for a series of debates on the underlying motion, commissioners that want to address the underlying motion and the motion to amend may do so, but we're only going to do this once. And I, yes, just one minute. The other thing is just a reminder, I want to be respectful. Everyone has thoughts on this issue, I am sure. I already have talked to a lot of folks, so I know that there is not an agreement around this, Diaz, on that issue. So I expect that we'll all address this with respect for each other as we always do. We have a five-minute rule. I'll probably be liberal on that, but there is a rule in there somewhere with respect to how much time we have to address issues. So please also be respectful of your colleagues on that. Now you had a point of order.
Just to clarify, even though the debate, or, just to clarify, even though the debates will be held concurrently, there will be... will be held concurrently, there will be, there will still be two separate votes, correct?
Yeah, yes, yes. We will still be required to take a vote first on the motion to amend, and then a motion, the underlying motion will be voted on. Correct. Now, with that, does anyone wish to address the resolution? I think Commissioner Ponstein may have been first.
I'm, I'm going to maybe reserve my thoughts about this till later, but I just want to point out to the people here, no matter how the Commissioners on this vote on this, we received a 152-page document with supporting information. We got information on three different proposals, one to keep it at .25, one to keep it at .35, and one for .45. So it's not like we've just come to this decision quickly. There's been a lot of thought. The committee spent months on this, on, on the recommendation. So I just wanted to point that out to the audience, that there was more background than just what we're hearing today.
Thank you. I believe Commissioner Diaz, you were next.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to quickly acknowledge the full room and the overflow room that we have today. I can't speak for prior committees or prior years, prior boards, that is, or prior years, but this is the most people I have seen at any one of our meetings, and I think that speaks to how important this issue is. I've been raising this point for a while now, but I think I personally would like to have, or would like to hear from those Commissioners who sat on the subcommittee that rejected the recommendation for First Steps Kent for a .45 increase, and instead recommended a flat renewal at .25. We did hear from public, from the public today, various reasons to why the recommendation was made, but at least, in my view, I still don't have clarity on why we are not taking up the recommendation by the organization that is managing that, these funds, and that, in my view, is much more prepared to say what we should be doing. So I don't know if that's out of order, but I would like to see if we can hear from those Commissioners, and I'll see the floor to.
Each Commissioner is entitled to make their comments, and their position's known. No Commissioner needs to respond to any other comment. You may, if it's consistent with the rules, but no one needs to, but I understand your comment.
Thank you. In that case, I'll wait to, I conclude, to see if anybody would like to reply. But yeah, I mean, in that case, I mean, I was invited, as I said, at Legislative, at LHR, a couple of weeks ago, to the annual meeting from the Grand Rapids Chamber of Commerce. And they specifically said that we need to address not only the childcare crisis, but also the housing crisis in Kent County, in order for our economy to continue to grow and thrive. I have three, I have two nephews and a niece. All three of them are under three years old, and one of them, for sure, the oldest, for sure, has a speech delay. If I'm not mistaken, I don't want to speak for other Commissioners on this board, but I know that there are other Commissioners on this board who have kids. I think that I have seen some of these Commissioners say that their kids or loved ones also have speech delays. I've read articles, you know, I'm a political science student, so this is kind of something that I'm low-key a little bit too obsessed with, but I read articles all the time, scientific journals, all of that. The experts are specifically telling us that the kids that were born during the pandemic are more delayed than other kids that were born before that. Of course, we have the issues of kids being too attached to screens. That's an issue that's been there for a while now, but specifically, the issue with, or one of the issues, the kids that were born during the pandemic, is that they don't have the same level of contact with other kids and other adults that they did before the pandemic. Kids that were exposed to COVID while they were in the womb are more susceptible to these delays. I, I think that it would be, I don't even have the words for it. We would be missing an enormous opportunity to do what we can to help the kids in our community today. And if this amendment is voted down, it would be really shameful. It really would be. I don't know, I, I'm low-key curious to see if Madam Clerk can tell us. I know that we're trying to get this on the August ballot. I don't know if there's a certain timeframe by when this decision needs to be made to give you enough time to put it on the ballot, but I, I personally think that we haven't had nearly enough discussion. So again, I hope that we can get some answers today, especially from those who were on the subcommittee, but that's all I'll say for now.
I will identify that in part on the timing question. The original advocates, proponents for First Steps Kent had requested this be done in timely fashion in order to get it on the ballot at the time of the August primary. So that requires this board to have done its work, I think, by the end of March. So we have felt that it's important that we put it up today. We all know what happens around spring break time, and so this is, this is when we thought it needed to be addressed. Commissioner Antor. I'm sorry, were you done, Commissioner? Yes, Commissioner Antor.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I appreciate everybody coming and for your input. I don't have any scientific data, but I do have common sense, and I, I wish, and I hope, and I pray, especially the clergy in this room, that should know better, and I'm sure they do, the crowd is split in a lot of ways. But just over a week ago, on February 13, 2024, Public Act 286 went into effect, which allowed, and I'm sure I'm going to get some booing and some hissing, partial birth abortions to be legal in this state for any reason under the sun. Perfectly viable baby is delivered out the birth control, not the entire baby, just enough to expose the head.
Commissioner, just.
Sorry.
Make sure you address.
Scissors are then placed in the back of the head of a living baby, and its brains are sucked out. And it's the most reprehensible thing I've ever even heard of, and I know the Bible speaks of, if you mess with a child, you're better with a millstone tied around your neck and cast into the sea. During this entire process, I've supported everything we can do for children, but under the First Steps Ready by Five, that includes, includes prenatal. And I don't understand why there wasn't a huge effort on behalf of the group, I'm sorry, on behalf of the group, in a lobby effort, some sort of information to stop that from happening. It's so hard for me to grasp that we're going to be worried about kids that have the opportunity to finish the trip through the birth canal, but yet, a few seconds earlier, we're going to snuff their life up, and we're going to celebrate it, some of us. It makes no sense whatsoever under the sun, and we should be ashamed of ourselves, because we know it. And when Pastor Scott comes in here and holds up his pictures, he gets booed. I apologize, Pastor Scott, for being accosted verbally for telling the truth. If you can't handle the truth, maybe you should be doing something else with your time. This millage is important. They do some good things, but the thousand-pound gorilla in the room that we continue to ignore, it just, it drives me nuts. You know, I think Ronald Reagan once said the scariest nine words in the English language is, I'm from the government, and I'm here to help. I've heard case after case of people saying, we can't do it on our own. We need more government, more government. We want to double the millage, or whatever it is. And man, I'm a child of the 60s, and I knew things were tough. We didn't have all these programs. I talked to a lobbyist yesterday, and he said, what are you doing? You entertaining the thought of this Ready by Five? There's so much money out there in other programs, state money, federal money, they can't spend it all. But to think that the government has to be childcare providers, when we're creating the very situation where people have to work two and three jobs because of inflation and horrible policies from this, this president and the administration, forcing people to work all these jobs so they need childcare, we're going out the world backwards. It's self-created hardship. And I'm just, this tears me up to think that we're ignoring these precious babies, the most vulnerable amongst us, that are allowed to be murdered on the day they're supposed to be born. I don't know how anybody can rectify that. I'll, I'll vote to go along with the current millage, but I'm certainly not going to increase it until I see this group and other groups like it stand up for life, you know? Stand up for life. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, guess which one's the most important? Without the first one, life, it's an unalienable right. Without that, all this is a moot point. I think we're doing a really job of patting each other on the, you know, back, and boom by ah, we're here for the kids, but we're ignoring the fact we're murdering babies that are 100% viable with their own independent DNA, and we have our heads in the sand, shame on us, because like the Bible says, if we ignore things like that, we're complicit in, in, in what happens afterwards. I'm not going to be in that camp, so I'm going to call it out. People might say, well, this isn't really tied to, it's absolutely tied to this, because this is prenatal care that isn't happening. I could go on, but I won't, but I, I hope there's people in this audience that feel like I do, and understand, and I know some of the clergy here absolutely understand the evil of partial birth abortions.
Thank you. Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Thanks for joining us today. I appreciate all the, the passion that this community brings to this issue. I believe the millage is a big win for all of Kent County. It shows we're dedicated to helping our smallest citizens and giving them a great start in life. There's many studies that show the impact of childhood, early childhood programs and the positive outcomes they have later in life. This millage is an important program, and First Steps Kent has done a great job managing the programs and funds. I served on the Early Childhood Millage Subcommittee six years ago, and I chaired the Subcommittee this time around. I am adamantly opposed to any increase for this millage. As a taxpayer and a gatekeeper of my constituents' tax dollars, I believe it's best to renew the millage. And you may tell me that polls of a few hundred people would approve the millage as an increase, but I'm not convinced of the necessity. Before making the choice to increase the rate, I need to see results of how these millage-funded programs have positively impacted our kids. At the time, when the Subcommittee reviewed the proposal, there was not enough data available. The leaders of Ready by Five also admitted that fact. There has only been one cohort of children who have entered kindergarten at this point. We need more metrics on how the programming as a whole has fared. It will take more time to fully understand the impact on preparing our kids for kindergarten. A formal assessment is currently underway. And with that said, too, the committee also recognized that there's challenges surrounding childcare. The Subcommittee was asked, and we also recommended in our report, to add text to the ballot, measure referencing quality of and access to information about childcare, to open the opportunity for millage spending in that service area. We're not asking Ready by Five to increase the services they provide. We're giving them the opportunity to shift. If they want to focus the funds more on early childcare initiatives, they have that flexibility. So at this point, I will continue to support the renewal of the millage at .25, but I will also be open to hearing of the successes of the programs, and having a committee formed to review that down the road. And if the committee wants to bring the millage back to our board before six years, they have the opportunity to do that, if programs do show success, if the results do show the success of the millage. So that's all I have to say. If you have any other questions, feel free to reach out later on.
Thank you. Commissioner LeGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I really want to thank all of our visitors today, and especially for the wide variety of voices that we heard from. I'm thinking of the parent, the mother, who took her child to Early On. I was one of those mothers who was in an Early On group, who needed early intervention for a child who had unexpected challenges early in life. Big ones, big ones. And it was a really, it was a great opportunity, and when we're talking about, you know, not glamorous money, you know, eating your vegetables, these are not even the glamorous vegetables, you know? This is the kale of early childhood. But it, it is, it is tremendous work that gets done there. It is, it is tremendous work that gets done there, and the whole point of early childhood investment is that you're able to change that trajectory, and Early On is a perfect example of this, where, you know, it might flatline or go down. You're, you're able to make that arc, that life, go up higher than anyone would have expected. And as Mr. Chamberlain said, there is still unmeant need, there's still proven unmeant need. And I had a very good conversation with Jane, sorry, Kristen, Kristen Geethen, who runs Arbor Circle, and who, they run the KEEP program. They provide that for, for, for this, for Ready by Five. And if you don't know about it, that's KEEP Early Education Positive, and this is for children who have a hard time in preschool, kids who are expelled from preschool. Probably a lot of you know this is a thing.
So I know you're addressing me.
Yes, no, sorry, yes. Chair, you know this is a thing. But that we are able to, that we are able to help parents, that we are able to help the children, that we're able to help these childcare providers provide a situation where the children are able to stay, develop more social skills, which is going to help them in the future in school. And they, I said, if you had more, you know, if you had more money, could you serve more people? And she said, absolutely. We, we can't meet the demand that we currently have for this. And this is the perfect example of where this is a workforce issue, because when a parent, they've got a spot, but then they lose it because of their, their child has problems that, you know, can potentially be solved, then this is rippling through, through the workforce, and they're, and they're losing, they're losing workers. So I, I really want to wind up just by saying, as Reverend Sparks says, this is about democracy. We can take this to the voters. Our founding fathers, you know, one, one of their, one of their rallying cries was no taxation without representation, but it wasn't no taxation. If we see the need, you know, this, this, this proposed amendment is a modest rise in, in these funds. And we know there is unmeant need for programs that are currently solving problems that were not being solved before on this scale. So we have an opportunity to do something for the county here, for our families, for our workforce, for our employers, and, and I would just encourage my fellow Commissioners to vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodin. Minority Vice Chair Woodin, I wanted to say that one more time.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Steck. As I have reflected on this question since it was discussed during Finance Committee, I remain steadfast in my opinion that the voters deserve the opportunity to choose whether to support added investment or not. And while I respect the opinions of many of my colleagues who have disagreed with me, and I completely accept the sincerity behind them, I do feel a need to challenge several of them in the most civil and deliberative ways. First, I feel the need to right-size how this question would impact the average taxpayer. And I know the report provided showed how much a .35 millage would cost properties of certain taxable values that were rounded, to give an example, but I wanted to find a more accurate number. And so I pulled from our 2023 Equalization Report, which shows state taxable value of all properties in the county and the number of parcels, and found that the increase to the average taxpayer, the increase would be another $13.85 a year. That's another dollar and 15 a month. For the average homeowner, it's even less. An extra 10 cents per $1,000 of taxable value is $10.72 a month. Now, that is for the increase, not the full millage amount, but it is what we're debating right now in terms of the amendment. Less than a dollar a month, and less, and .01% of the median household income in Kent County. Now, I for one think that it is wise and appropriate to be watchful and ensure we do not allow our constituents to get saddled with excessive tax burden. But in light of these figures, the potential increase to the average taxpayer is far less than the costs to households who cannot find an affordable childcare and the cost to our economy. Several have understandably also suggested that more data is needed to verify potential return on investment before this millage should be considered for an increase. And anyone who has served with me long enough, or just paid attention to the last few comments, know I value data. And it is wise to request such a thing when making significant decisions like this one. But the premise for the belief that this millage will bring forth a return on investment is based on findings from a Nobel Prize economist from the Chicago School of Economics, which, by the way, is the same school that hired Milton Friedman. And it's based on 35 years of data from the Perry Preschool Project, randomized control trial of 128 three- and four-year-old children. His findings also show that the return on investment is realized when those children are approaching adulthood and afterwards, far longer than the six years this millage has been in place. And while it is true that all communities are different, and its children can face unique obstacles, I cannot see how the findings from 35 years' worth of data, from a randomized control study, are not valuable enough to show us the return we will see from this investment. So the only local data we would benefit to draw from at this point is what First Steps Kent has provided, to show how effective they have been. Despite being hindered by the COVID-19 pandemic, they have ramped up programming. In 2022, they served, they've said before, they've served over 12,400 children and parents. I followed up- I followed up to ask how many children under five were part of that group, and it's, it's 10,672. That's 26% of the entire county population of children in that age range. Now, in comparison, our, our senior millage, which is rightfully seen as the gold standard for our special millage services, serves 16% of Kent County seniors. They're serving a larger portion of this population with less, and they are showing their effectiveness. Their early findings show that children who receive these services have seen incremental increases in kindergarten readiness despite broad decreases in kindergarten readiness due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Imagine their ability, if we allow the voters to choose further investment, where an average homeowner pays another 89 cents a month. I have seen firsthand the quality services First Steps Kent provided with this millage. Several of the services provided are available to any child or household in Kent County, and my family is one of them. My wife, my wife was able to receive postpartum respite care during her maternity from Mom's Bloom, thanks to this millage. My son, Samuel, is a regular attendee of the GRCC Play and Learn Groups. And there he has had an opportunity, like so many of the other parents who shared, to meet others his age and learn from structured play. And it was his time around peers in these Play and Learn Groups that his mother, his caregiver, and I all came to see a similar story to what we heard this morning, that my son was dealing with a speech delay. And it was through the Family Futures Ages and Stages questionnaire that we saw this more clearly. And having this identified early allowed us to seek services through Early On, through KISD and private providers. And after a tongue tie release, speech therapy, and considerable efforts over months, he's now meeting his developmental stages for speech for the first time. And I'm holding back tears because I'm so, so proud of my child. But were it not offered, were it not for the services offered by this millage, we may not have felt confident enough to raise that question. And we're a pretty confident set of parents and seek the help needed to get our son on a path towards success. And while a renewal does not inherently risk such services, a renewal with an expansion of eligible services may. As noted, childcare was added to the language. And but by adding childcare without offering the voters a chance to increase investment, the only way this new potential service can be properly funded is if existing services are cut. And such a cut would be detrimental to our community. Because I also know that there are children like my son who don't have the same resources my family had and the abilities to seek help without this millage. Existing services and childcare are vital to our county's success, and we owe it to the voters to give them the chance to make this investment. And so I ask you to give the voters a chance to decide whether to make this crucial investment in our kids, our economic potential, and our long-term prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, I don't, you're gonna make me make a call here. All right, Commissioner Pakel, let's go with you, and then we'll go with Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I want to acknowledge the work of the Subcommittee and the voices here in this room. As Commissioner Diaz recognized, this is the largest group that we've been able to see as the freshman group of commissioners. So we really appreciate hearing the voices of the public here. But like Commissioner Diaz, I too am a little confused about how we got here to the point where we are suggesting a .25 millage instead of the requested .45. Apologies for some of these questions and these thoughts, but we have skipped a couple of the steps where we would have been able to ask these questions. We've had no special order of business, and we did not discuss this in LHR previously. So this is the first time we've really been able to talk about this issue directly. As I mentioned, my confusion is this. We, we were presented with a request for .45, but the Subcommittee recommended .25, and there's no clear reason for the specific shift that I can see. There's no data, there's no public comment, there's no aspects of the millage other than some rationales in the minutes, in the reports to suggest that there is not enough data to evaluate the effectiveness of the program. But on the flip side, the written report, the presentations, have both provided significant evidence that the goals of the millage have been met and that First Steps Kent has done their fiduciary duty with regard to the millage funds. It also points out, the millage report itself points out, and the language on the actual millage proposal points out that this millage is not suggested to actually provide childcare, that it has not been part of the work of the millage, that it's not intended to be part of the millage. It's intended to increase the quality of the childcare and to increase information on access to childcare. The Ready by Five Steering Committee, First Steps Kent themselves, and 100% of the subsequent communication in the public have all been in support of renewal and, and expansion. And as Minority Vice Chair, Minority Vice Chair Wooden highlighted, these programs are based on best practice and decades of research. So again, I'm confused about where the .25 is coming from. We've heard about the immense benefits that the interventions and the programs funded by the millage are doing, and I can't imagine not extending these benefits to as many children in Kent County as possible. We haven't heard anybody in the public opposing the work of the millage or the suggestion to increase the millage rate. So why do we on the Board of Commissions get to make that decision? Why can't the voters make that decision? We know the investment in early childhood education has an immense return on investment. Commissioner Wooden skipped the number. It's $13 for every $1 that we invest. So I'm a math wonk. I'm, to use a phrase from my commissioner to my left, I'm low-key into math. So from the .45 compared to .25, we're leaving $100 million of ROI on the table. From the amendment that we see in front of us, we're leaving $40 million of ROI on the table. I just can't imagine us doing that for any other reason. The report, the report also outlines that without this increase, at least 10,000 children per year are going to go without the critical services that just some of our children in our county get. So why are some of our children getting this and not all? Not renewing is not an option. More than 10,000 children per year have benefited from the millage. My family has benefited, benefited from the millage. Commissioner Wooden's family, many in the room, our families have benefited from this millage. My two kids both went to the Early Childhood Center at GRCC, where the millage is supporting high-quality interventions for my children and their classmates. They have engaged in the Play and Learn Groups during spring break when GRCC is closed, during winter break when GRCC is closed. We still get to have that social interaction between my kids and other kids and other families. I'll certainly support a renewal, but I won't lie, if we don't support the increase, I'll be disappointed. I'll be disappointed for all the parents that won't get the benefit of these services to support the hard work of being a parent. I'll be disappointed for all the children that won't get to access developmental screenings and the lead screenings to prevent long-term impact. And most of all, I'll be disappointed for our community that will lose the economic benefit and the societal good that we could have by supporting our youngest voters. I can't imagine why we wouldn't want to put that question to the voters, and I hope that we would consider the amendment in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, as a, as a parent of a lot of kids, a couple who fit that, a couple born in the last, you know, couple of years, fit that pandemic baby timeframe. The public commenter who mentioned that, that parents are tired, that resonated with me. I, I, I understand that.
For the record, the number is 10, is it not?
Yes, I, so I have 10 children, so I, I, I understand, you know, the early childhood, late childhood, and everything in between. I do need more coffee, thank you. So I, I think this is a very important conversation. I'm, I'm very glad we're having it. I, I appreciate, you know, Commissioner Baker putting his particular, you know, thoughts for it as an amendment. I, when this, so I was on the Commission when this first came up, six years ago. Thank you, sir. And, and I, I mentioned this when we, when we deliberated on this in, in Finance Committee a few weeks back. There, there is an aspect of, you know, our, our work on like early childhood education that I think is worthy of further debate. My cousin, at the time, had just had his second child. They live in, in Helsinki, and in, in Finland, they don't send, they have some preschool programs and whatnot, but they don't start kids in school until they're at least seven years old. So this kind of different philosophy, and in fact, there's lots of aspects of that. Their, their particular philosophy, though, seems to be working better than ours of, you know, pushing things earlier and earlier, younger and younger with the educational aspect. But that's not really the, the debate here. The debate here is really just about the particular millage tax rate and costs. The, it's, it's easy to get lost, I think, in the kind of weird terminology of, you know, government and millage rates and everything. But with the detailed report from the Subcommittee that, that looked at this and worked on, you know, what we should, what they thought we should put forward to voters, whether a renewal or an increase, had a great amount of detail on, on some of the data and the aspects. And I just want to express my appreciation again for all of that work. But in just the dollars factor, the first year that the, this millage was in place, it was $5.5 million. And then the, the first year of this renewal or expansion period at the .25 millage rate, it'd be, I think it was $7.7 million. So first year to first year comparison, it's up by $2 million, whatever that is. Now, in the finance debate, I, I heard someone say, you know, with the, you know, effects of inflation, we're asking them to do more with less. And I think, so I went and looked the Bureau of Labor Statistics and just ran their little calculator. And that actually, while inflation is certainly, you know, hitting us all, that's, that's not actually true that it's gone down. And if you look at the real dollars adjusted for inflation, it's actually still up about a million bucks, you know, that first year of the period to the first year of this next period. So when, when we considered this six years ago, I actually voted against it, against putting it on the ballot. And I think that, you know, at the time, you know, some just concerns about the, the programs and the, whether they would really be effective. I think some of these programs have absolutely demonstrated, you know, effectiveness. You know, I've had children before the, the early childhood millage was in place. I've had children after. And a number of the programs, like Commissioner Wooden mentioned, the Family Futures, you know, Ages and Stages Survey, I think that's a very useful program that actually existed and was funded prior to this millage. So a, a number of those things, you know, are, have been in place. But I, I do think there have been things that have shown good results. But it's still out of people's, you know, wallets, you know, there, there's still a, even adjusted for inflation, it's a, a million dollars in more taxes with that .25 rate. And so the question to myself is like, in this really difficult time, and I, I know we can look at the, you know, just pure averages of, you know, homeowner values and, and what it would be just a couple bucks a month. But I know a lot of people right now that are, are in really difficult spot where they walk into Meyer to buy groceries for their kids, and they don't have the money for that. They have to, you know, open up a new credit card to be able to buy the groceries for the kids. So it's easy to say a couple bucks a month is not that big of a deal. But for some people, it, it is. And that, that I think we should, we should keep in mind. When, when this was voted on in 2018, I think we were in different economic circumstances for sure than we are today. And the vote, I looked it up just as we were starting the meeting, 57% voted in favor of it, 43%, over 100,000 people voted against it. If it's a renewal, I, I suspect that the, the vote will pass. If it's a expansion of the rate in these tougher economic times, will the vote pass again? I don't know. But the, I think that's, that's riskier. I think, I think that the, the other factor is, if I recall correctly from the Subcommittee's report, and there's a whole host of factors, you know, with pandemic timing and the ability to spend funds and things. But the, the current account has a pretty significant balance of funds. And so I think the voters did approve that .25 rate. So I, I'm of the opinion, you know, even though it's a tax increase, you know, a million bucks, you know, inflation-adjusted terms, like I, I think it's important that the voters do get the chance to say yes or no on that. And so, so I will be supporting the, the .25 renewal and putting, supporting it so that voters have the chance to, to weigh in on that in August. And, and I do think that the, it's a very, you know, important debate. And I think all of us kind of want, you know, the same thing, which is how does our community as a whole, you know, give the best to the kids of Kent County? And so I think the, putting this through to voters, letting them decide again if they want to renew. Unfortunately, you know, as the laws, as I understand them, there isn't an option to put a multiple-choice question on the ballot of do you want 0%, .25, .35, .45? Like, maybe that would be a good option, but for whatever election reasons, I, I don't think that's possible. It's just an up or down. And if, if it gets voted against, then, then we're to zero funding, which I actually think would be problematic. So, so I'm going to support the, the .25, but not the .35. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Excuse me. I also wanted to thank the folks that came today. I was sent in on the Legislative and Human Resources Committee hearing where many gave public comment. I was obviously here for finance when we discussed this, and I had the opportunity to sit on, sit in on one of the meetings of the Subcommittee that reviewed this as well. So I, I appreciate the work of everybody who's, who's worked on this from the jump, but also who's come in from the public to offer their feedback and input in the interim. I just wanted to, I said a lot during the Finance Committee, and I'm going to try to say a little bit less today. But the Commissioner Coleman just mentioned the, the real dollars in revenue, right, that the, the millage has generated. It'll be a couple million more dollars if we move forward with a renewal on this in the next fiscal year. We get caught in the trap a lot at local government or at any, any levels of government, I think, looking at the, the revenue dollars and forgetting what generates the revenue. It comes from taxes, in this case, property taxes. And it's great that the revenue is up 22%, but that also means that the taxes that we're all paying are also up 22%. And yes, on the back end, your property value is more. But if anybody's been in the housing market, that's not worth a whole lot right now unless you're willing or able to downsize. So that, that's, I appreciate Commissioner Wooden's comments about, you know, his interpretation of the data that shows what the, the cost to a taxpayer is. But I think it's important to also note that you're paying 22% more in taxes than you were when we passed this in 2019. The rate hasn't gone up 22%, but the actual dollars have gone up that much, 21% by the report. So I, I think that's important to know. And, you know, a couple, there was a, I, I think another commissioner mentioned that 100% of the public, the comment has been in favor. But, but some folks reach out to commissioners directly and tell us, you know, things that aren't heard by everyone. And there are people in my district who say, you know, please be careful about increasing the tax rates. Please be careful about adding on to our, our burden of millages, whatever else we have to do. And I, I try to hear that and bring that to this dais and do it in a way that's, you know, reasonable. And I think that it's, it is an important role that we have here, not just to rubber stamp what comes across our desk, but to actually review it, do the due diligence, and then decide what we take, we put to the voters for a decision. You know, I, I think, I think it was Commissioner Legrand who mentioned the founding fathers, and I appreciate that perspective. There was another thing that came to my head that, you know, the founding fathers gave us a representative republic. It were not a direct democracy. And we have a statutory right, and I think an obligation as commissioners, to, to do that due diligence before we take things to the residents to ask for what they, how they feel about a particular. things to the residents to ask for what they, how they feel about a particular issue. So, I, I, I feel strongly about that, but I, I think that what I mentioned in Finance that I want to drive home again today is, this, this millage, I think, and the services that it provides are, are excellent. We're the only, this is directly quoted from the report, "The only millage in the state of Michigan solely dedicated to early childhood services that prepare children for kindergarten." That's fantastic. That should be celebrated. We're out in front, we're leading the way, we're doing more than any other local government is to invest in those who, who arguably need the most investment at that point in, in their lives. So, no one else is doing what Kent County is doing, and, and we should be proud of it. I am proud of it, and that's why I've supported and will support today that the work of that subcommittee and the subcommittee's recommendation that we move forward with a, with a renewal. You know, we are out in the front, we're leading the way. I, I know there's a lot of leaders in this room, both at the dais, obviously, we're all member, leaders in our communities, but leaders who have come here from their organizations and members of the public, and, and you know, when in leadership, you're faced with difficult decisions. When you're out in front and you're leading other people, setting an example, sometimes you have to make decisions that are difficult, but you have to make sure that you're, when you're setting example, you're not, you're not leading people down a path that might not work out. So, I, I think this is a great, the great millage for our community. I'm not in favor of increasing it today. I think we should probably revisit that conversation prior to the end of the six years and talk about whether that would be appropriate before we get to the, the next time we'd be scheduled to look at it. But, that, that's, I think we need to be leading deliberately and not, not, not going out and throwing more money at a, at a, at a problem just because we know the problem is tough to tackle. I think we need to bring everybody together to continue to work on it. So, I will not be supporting the motion to amend, but I will be supporting the millage, and, and I encourage my, my colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair Stack. So, I was one of the members that sat on the Ready by Five Millage Subcommittee, and we held numerous meetings, we gathered all the data, we absorbed all the presented information, and we produced that 150-page report that was given to everyone here in the board. I also have the opportunity to sit on the Ready by Five Proposal Review Committee, and additionally, I have a daughter who just got out of that five age range, so I've been right in this, this area, in this space for a while now. I don't think anybody is disputing that there's good that's done with these funds, but I still think that there's a lot that needs to be done before we ask the taxpayers to contribute more of their hard-earned money to this increased millage. We have not had a full cohort of kids that have received the services, and we just don't have the data right now, right now necessary to pursue an increase. As has been said, we're the only county in the state that has a millage that provides programs in the way that Ready by Five does. But, as the first, I think that means we need to be methodical in our approach and make sure that we have the data necessary to back up that growth. And unfortunately, due to COVID, the program had to be paused at that time, and we're just not there yet. I also think that we have some missed opportunities to take a collaborative West Michigan approach to this issue. While I sat on the Ready by Five Proposal Review Committee, there were a number of projects where we had missed opportunities to work with the state, the faith community that's represented here today, parents, businesses, educational programming providers, and even other Kent County agencies. So, I believe it's our job as the commissioners to look at the big picture. We need to be prudent in what we're asking our taxpayers to consider, and I think renewal at the current rate will do just that. It gives us more time for the data to be gathered and give the Ready by Five Millage Committee the time to prioritize the needed and successful programs while we can collaborate locally here. So, I encourage all of my colleagues to support the renewal at the current rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. Some of you know that I've had some significant childcare issues in the past, and I just wanted to say that I empathize with the people here, and I appreciate that they're here, sharing their personal experiences. I have three kids myself, and we have definitely had some trying times. I had to leave corporate world because I didn't have solid childcare. But, saying that, I had put a lot of my time in the last couple of years into this realm, into, into education and into early childhood, but I do also principally disagree with some of the, the role of government in this situation. And I, I appreciate Commissioner Green and, and sharing that, you know, our founders were actually against a, a direct democracy, and so, you know, my own principles and my own values, I cannot support the increase. One of my major complaints that I hear from my residents is that, the issue of property taxes, and, you know, they're already trying to make ends meet, and to increase that when only around 9% of my constituents use the services that Ready by Five provides, I, I can't support an increase to this millage at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I've been listening to this, and I was taking notes as some of the people were speaking and addressing us this morning, and when Irwin began it with the fact that we are a national leader in early childhood, and, and it took me back to around 2007 when we took the, the really bold step of forming a Kent's, KSSN, Kent Social Services Network. It was a very, very bold step on our part. No one else, again, was doing this, and now it's become spread out to helping children, especially in elementary school, throughout our city, throughout our community, and, and statewide. I remember I was at a school when Governor Snyder came in, and it became a priority for the state, and we are a national leader, and this is one of the programs in which we, you know, have the chance to do something and to do more and to really pull this together. And it reminds me of, of that we do have the Senior Services Millage, and, and this is, this was modeled, and the administration was modeled, on what has been a successful program there, to keep administrative costs in control, to coordinate the services provisions, to prioritize what is provided in the community, and to serve those people who are the most vulnerable, and who are the most vulnerable, those children, you know, from zero to five, and those people who are in their senior years. And I think that this all can work together and that we can really provide for our most vulnerable citizens to give our children the very best start. As I'm listening to the commissioners talk, and as I think of my own experiences some years ago with children, you know, you do need help in navigating and finding your way and getting services to help, and I don't think any of us are immune from having concerns. One of the parents early on said, these services create more confident parents, and that is worth a lot when it comes to raising children, because there is no rulebook, they don't come with any kind of a cookie cutter type of thing, and, and, you know, yeah, we're going to give them their vegetables before their dessert, you know? And, and the other thing is that a business owner, the business owner said these programs are evidence-based, and, and I can remember teachers asking in, in my kids' classrooms, "How many of you even went to preschool?" And they were able to predict, and they looked around the, teachers would look around the room, and they could somewhat predict who was going to do better in school, because early childhood, especially as parents are being pushed and families are being pushed to work more and more, it's, it's really important that, that the full range of services be there, and, and I think that we can start to create more independent services in having other sources, like we did with KSSN. You get more people to contribute, more sources of revenue to help into this whole thing. One mother said, Annalise said, "Think about the cost of not acting now," and I think that that is something to consider. You know, many my parents said, "Please let us vote," and, and as Lou Chamberlain said, "It is the right thing to do for our kids, it's the smart thing to do for our community." I will support the amendment, and if necessary, I will support the renewal, but I do think that this, at, at raising about $11 million in the first year under a renewed, renewal, not under renewal, under an increased millage of .35, you know, you do have to compare that to some of the other things we do. This is the services directed to our children and to their families, to their parents, and it's really, I think it's very valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Merchant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everybody that was here today to speak. I really appreciate your comments, and I also wanted to say hi to Annalise Van Heisenk Contras. You probably don't remember me, but you actually did your student teaching my senior year at Lowell High School with Mr. Larson, and so I just wanted to say hi. But also, I just wanted to say that I'm supportive of adding the .25 renewal of the Ready by Five Millage on the ballot, but I will not be supporting an increase. I believe it's our role to be judicious and cautious with taxpayer dollars, and we've heard that it's only a small increase to county residents, but just this last week, my neighbors and my family included, we received our increased property tax assessments this year, and just talking to the small number of folks that I was able to in the time that I had, their property taxes are going up anywhere between $300 and $700 just this year. And you combine that with the rising cost of inflation and the cost of groceries and everything else, the families that I talked to, the residents that I represent, they're tapped out, they're maxed out. And in addition to that, we haven't even begun to see the full effect of what inflation's going to do to us and to the residents. I mean, our insurance costs are going to continue to go up, the grocery costs are going to continue to go up, all those things, and salaries aren't going up. Families are struggling to pay their bills right now, and I'm not going to vote to add to their struggle, so I will not be supporting the increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Buttigieg.
Thank you, Chair Stack.
I'm sorry. You're just going to have to hold a second. Mr. McLeod, you are next.
Thank you, Chair. So, I spoke quite a bit about this in Finance Committee, and I'm not going to regurgitate all of that, but I would say that I do have similar questions and concerns that were raised by my colleagues, Commissioner Pakula as well as Commissioner Diaz, that we were, we received a steering committee report that had a suggestion, that had a recommendation that we increase the millage to .45. I know that there was a lot of work done on the subcommittee, the, the review subcommittee, and I appreciate that, my colleagues that sat on that and did that review, but also the, the report was pretty clear that with the increase in the millage amount, that so much more could be done to address some of the concerns that the, the community has said are out there, including childcare resources. So, I, I find it really hard for us to move forward with the millage amount that we currently have at .25 when there's been data presented to clearly show that there are needs that, that are still in the community that we need to address, and so, I will be supporting the renewal of the millage, and I also will be supporting the amendment, because I believe that our community has told us very clearly that this is what they desire, to be able to make the choice on their own. We're not voting here to increase the millage on our own. We're saying, we want to put it to the voters and let them make that choice, and I think that as, you know, many people have, have, have said about what democracy is, democracy means that if the voters tell us they want to make a decision about something, that we, we give them that right to do that. And so, again, we're not voting here to increase the millage outright, that's not our job, but what we are doing is saying the, the community told us that this is what they want, and we want to give them the opportunity to do that. And so, I will be voting to support both the renewal as well as the amendment, and I just appreciate everyone that came out today and shared their thoughts and comments, and those that have continually come to the Finance, the Finance Committee meetings as well as the, the other committee meetings where this has been discussed, because we do need to hear from you, we appreciate that you're passionate about this, and we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to make your voices heard at the polls when it's time to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner Buttigieg.
Thank you, Chair Stack. I also want to thank all the residents that came out this morning. Certainly, public comment is an important part of the deliberations of the county commissioners' work that's being done here, and hearing, hearing from the citizens is very important. I didn't really have a written statement here, so I'm going to maybe ramble just a little bit. Commissioner Ponstein, you know, reported that we have a recommendation from a subcommittee of our peers, and I have a difficult time voting or going against those recommendations. I sit on those committees, and you do a lot of hard work, and you bring forward your recommendation to the board at large, you know, with careful thought. And I looked at that subcommittee report, as mentioned, over 150 pages, and I not only read it once, but I read it twice, and I looked at every, every minutes and read every word in the minutes to find what the comments were in, in those deliberations. I spent probably eight hours of my personal time preparing for this particular vote, because I did, I did feel it was an important issue coming before this commission. And in preparing for that, I had concerns, like my fellow Commissioner DeBoer, about what is the role of government in this particular issue? So, I went to the Constitution of the United States of America, and I looked up childcare and, there was no, there was no wording in the Constitution that afforded childcare as a right, and then I decided, well, I'm going to go to the state constitution and look at the state constitution to see what the state constitution has to say about this, and nowhere in the state constitution was there any mention of childcare or pre-five care, any, any mention of children at all. And then finally, I did go to this book here, which is the book that the county gave me, which I consider to be somewhat the guide that I'm supposed to look at, and under Section 13.35, under Social Services Board, it does say that, as far as the county commission is concerned, "Other responsibilities may include the operation of a county infirmary and a childcare facility." So, voila, I found childcare somewhere in words of government, not at the Constitution, not at the state, but at the government level. So, I think the key word here was that the county "may include," doesn't say "shall include." So, I tried to do my homework on this particular issue, and then I decided to, you know, look at the materials given to me here from First Steps, and there was nothing that I found in this material that led me to believe that this program is anything but beneficial and a good program being afforded by the county. So then I decided, I'm going to look at my constituency. I'm a representative of District 21, so I went back to the records from the, from the election in 2018 to look at, what did my constituency, what do the voters in District 21 have to say about the Ready by Five Millage? My district includes Bound Township, Calidone Township, and one half of Cascade Township, and in District 21 in 2018, the Ready by Five Millage failed by 1,000 votes. So, it was clear to me historically that my district was more conservative in their views on this program, and the Ready by Five failed. So, I have a recommendation coming before me from my subcommittee, letting me know that the .25 is a likely good direction to go. I will not be supporting the .35, and I, I wanted to kind of make mention of this particular piece of literature here. At the bottom, it says, "First Step Kent," and I asked myself, "Why are the children of Kent County any more important than the children in Muskegon, or Kalamazoo, or Flint, or Detroit, or in the UP?" And I'm like, "Maybe this should say, 'First Steps, Michigan.'" And I encouraged this group to look beyond Kent County and take this, this lobbying force that they have and go to the state with this concern, so that the children all across the state of Michigan can benefit, and then we can put together a program called First Steps, Michigan. And our governor says that in her state address to the constituents of the state of Michigan, that she sees that pre-K... that she sees that pre-K in Michigan is a critical issue. So certainly, they, you know, taking this to the state would have support. And I think the state is ripe with financing in the form of abundant taxes that they've collected. And if the state was to put together a program like that, it would then come back through us to the county in the form of grants. So, you know, I urge them to go look at this First Steps Kent and then not be myopic and say, let's take a bigger approach to this and take this to the state. And maybe we can be the first state in the country to put Ready by Five as a priority for not just Kent County, but for the state. I will not be supporting the increase, but I will be voting to support the renewal. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein, is this your first, you think?
Well, I thought my first 30 seconds were just kind of pointing it out something. So I'll subtract 30 seconds from what I was gonna say now.
Just need to know. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So, I mean, it is definitely a difficult issue. And I think we've heard that here. It was nice to hear everyone speak on it. I think the tough part for a lot of people, the millage will benefit a sector paid for by all. And it'll be easy to say that all don't receive the services. But living in Granville, this is what my property tax bill looks like. I pay a millage on the state school tax, the transit tax, the school tax. We have a debt retirement on some of the new additions, new schools, new sporting facilities. We have a sinking fund for maintenance. We have the City of Granville tax. We have the Kent District Library. We've got the zoo. We've got the museum. We've got the special ed. We've got senior services. We've got the jail millage. And we've got the Ready by Five. And don't forget that 1% collection fee that your taxing unit collects also. So, I mean, we always say that if we raise a millage, it's gonna cost you, you know, $3, $4. When I was on a school board, what is that, 40 years ago, when we used to run millages, we used to say that this millage is only gonna cost you the price of a Big Mac. Now, back then, a Big Mac was 99 cents. I think now it's just under $10. But it all adds up. And a person like myself and my wife, who can afford to pay the property taxes without any pain or suffering, we live maybe a little lesser of a lifestyle. Instead of living somewhere that we could afford, we just live in a place where everything we need is there. And that's the big difference. I mean, our society's changing on how we spend money, what our priorities are. But, and the one point that came up is that we've got to respect the taxpayers. I kind of gotta laugh at that sometimes, too, because we've known, and I've pointed this out for the 16 years I've been on this committee, we have 31 different tax increment groups that will take money that the voters voted to give to the Ready Five and use it for purposes for themselves. Now, I'm gonna give the Brownfield Redevelopment Authorities a little break, because they're gonna be actually increasing the tax value after they're done, which will be a benefit. But one of probably the biggest person that will draw money away from the Ready by Five, not only if we increase the increase, but if we just leave it alone, is the City of Grand Rapids Downtown Development Authority. It's the number one. And I know in county taxes, they take over a million from us. And we keep talking about that. The state won't do anything about it. All these units can vote themselves to not take from other millages. And it's not just Ready by Five. It's all of them. Senior Services. I know the City of Wyoming doesn't collect them. Hats off to them. But, you know, if we're gonna talk about respect for taxpayers, we've got to figure out a better way to do on this. We have a federal government that's $34 trillion in debt. They're spending over a trillion more every year on their budgets. They talk about childcare, but I never see the dollars coming back in. There seems to be projects to fight wars and everything else that you want to do, and that's wrong. Our state of Michigan, I think, I always get my millions and billions and trillions confused, had a $6 billion surplus. The governor spoke about childcare and the importance in her speech, but nothing's come back. You know, they said, ah, we don't think we're gonna be able to get the votes, get the funding. But they had, I mean, take a look at what they spent that surplus down on. I mean, it's just, you know, the priorities are being taken over by political causes, and that's wrong. So to cut this to the short, I mentioned briefly there, I did sit on a school board. I sat on one for 21 years. And this is gonna be a tough vote for me. When I sat on there, I kind of agreed with Lou Chamberlain. I said, oh, my time on that board, there was a lot of difference made in a lot of children's and students' lives. And the people that paid for those services didn't get a direct result. But what they did get is that we put an investment into something that is paying dividends today to the community. And that's, I think, what things should be weighed against all the time, is that children are our future, you know? That's, I think, the way the Creator made that, is that when people like me get old and die, hopefully, they're selling young, may not be as wise, but maybe a little bit, you know, the ability to make a change in the community. So like I said, it's gonna be a tough vote, and I'm still mulling that over. But, you know, this is important. Kent County, West Michigan, is different. There's a reason why we're the only one in the state that has that, is that we look at things a little bit different. But what we've got as a community, as a county and a state, is we've got to find a better way to fund it, because there are people that can't make their property tax bills and are losing their homes. And that's not right either. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Lili Way, Chair, for the second comment.
I'm gonna define that as the first. Thank you. Mr. Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I want to address a couple of things here. I thank all of the people that came out today to make your voices heard. I thank my colleagues for their thoughts. I want to address why it's Kent First Steps. Why are our children so much more important? Because they're ours. They are our children, and they are the ones that are going to grow up and hopefully sit on the stais one day. I think that we are forgetting that we are segmenting ourselves. We have a mission in Kent County that says, and I'm going to read verbatim so I don't mess it up. Kent County Government is committed to providing resources and services that promote a high quality of life for the entire community. That doesn't mean 9% there. That doesn't mean this section over here. What it means is everybody, 658,000 constituents. And there may be some people that need a little more help and a little more assistance than others. That's what community is about. One in four children in our area are on an anti-anxiety medication. That is very concerning, because that was a number that was posted pre-COVID. Those are school-aged children. What are we going to do about our children? I would invest $10 a day, or if I had to, or $10, $360, basically, a dollar a day, so that I don't have to pay $47,900 for somebody to be incarcerated. I would invest a dollar a day so that your children, your children, your children are happy and healthy and have everything that they need to prosper from that zero to five. When we look at reading, children, grade three, not being able to read, that is a problem. The programs through Kent First Steps addresses that. We talk about not wanting to have taxpayers pay more money. Last time I checked, all these people here are taxpayers, and they're asking to pay a little more because they get investment. They get community. They're not saying, oh, I'm just going to spend this money. They're looking at the money as an investment. And we're not doing that. Matter of fact, we're really being quite rude and ignoring them, because all they're doing is saying, let me get the opportunity to vote. Sounds like my ancestors. They're not getting the opportunity. We represent everyone in Kent County. We have to look at the risk versus the rewards. And right now, I'm sad to say that we are failing, in my opinion, the people who elected us to be here. I'm looking at building. Yeah, someone said, we're gonna build a soccer stadium. We're gonna build an amphitheater. We're gonna do all these things that are so important, but we don't want to invest in our children. That's sad, very sad. Confident people are confident parents. Thank you for that, Commissioner Hennessy. Confident people are confident parents who can raise confident children. And God knows, right now, our children are not confident. They're scared. They're being dismissed. It's always someone else's priority or issue or problem. Trying, I have so many notes here. And then the other thing, we're acting like people are so broke. Every time I drive by a Starbucks, the line is out the door. Justin Timberlake's coming to town. $280 for tickets. I'm pretty sure he'll sell out. Give people the opportunity to spend their money the way they want to spend it, because it is their money, is all they're asking for, an opportunity to take care of their children, their families, their loved ones, so that they can then be productive members of society. That's all any parent really wants, is for their child to be productive. But we need to help them and give them the tools to do that, because per our, what we pay thousands of dollars for a consultant to tell us, is that Kent County Government is committed, are we, to providing resources, do we? And services, don't look that way, that promote a high quality of life for the entire community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hold on. Any other commissioner who has not yet spoken, other than me, who wishes to address the issue? Okay, I don't see any, so our rules do allow a second. So double-check that. It does. So Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments specifically to the amendment, the 0.25 versus the 0.35. So probably have my figures not exactly right, but as I remember from the report and like crunching the numbers in preparation for this, this coming six years, the 0.25 is somewhere just north of $10 million more than the first six years. And the amendment would add like an additional $10 million over that full six-year period, roughly. And so I reject this idea that like those that are in favor of $10 million and more taxes versus $20 million and more taxes are somehow not interested in investing in Kent County's kids. I think that is like an absurd thing to suggest that that, you know, substantial additional investment in Kent County's kids is somehow not wanting to invest. I do, I do think that there's just a like practical aspect of this. And correct me, Mr. Chair, if I am misremembering from the report, but because of like the pandemic and the ability to, you know, not spend a lot of these funds in 2020, 2021, the fund balance, I think, is somewhere in the order of $8 or $9 million, something like that, that's sitting in this account right now. So as we're debating this, like, is it $10 million more, or should we do $20 million more over the next six years? I think it's prudent to say, look, we've got more than a year of this six-year term already just sitting in the bank. Let's go to the voters with the renewal millage rate. And that, in my opinion, is more likely to get approved, and then see how that plays out. And as has been suggested, you know, take a look at it in a few years earlier than the end of the six-year term to see how things are going. So I think that's my logic on the specific 0.25, 0.35 question. Is with that substantial fund balance, I think it doesn't make sense to increase it until we've seen working through that. And then the last thing, it was mentioned in public comment, the eat your vegetables before dessert, which I appreciate the metaphor. But as a rule for parenting, I personally hope that doesn't apply to three-year-olds, because three-year-olds are impossible. So I think there's a carve-out for three-year-olds on that rule.
It's not in the Constitution, but, all right. Commissioner Anter, and by the way, if we're gonna do a second round here, I'm gonna limit it to two minutes, if we're gonna do a second round. Okay?
All right, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Anter, two minutes.
Thank you. Just talk about the idea of this being a really small amount that we're gonna pay, whether it's a couple bucks or whatever. But we've all heard the term a death by 1,000 cuts. And if you were to watch a leaky faucet for a couple hours and you plug the drain, there's literally dozens, if not hundreds, of fees and taxes we pay every day that we're not even aware of. And if you let that thing keep dripping, in a couple hours, that sink's gonna be half-full, even though it's just one drip at a time. And that's what happens. We're totally delusional, I guess, when it comes to this issue, because we don't understand how badly we're being taxed, because it's not even in our frame of mind when we're buying things. And the other thing is, it's not everybody that's paying for this. It's the property owners. This is not a tax that everybody's paying. It's the property owners. And there's more registered voters than there are property owners. So it's easy, if I'm living in my mom and dad's basement, to vote for every millage increase that comes down the pike, because I don't have to pay anything. And that's just a fact. So I would like to get out of this whole property taxing altogether and find a different way that's more fair to everyone, instead of just the people that own property, and be more representative, because that number of property owners is far less than registered voters. And that's just, that's a fact. So let's be, if we're gonna do this, let's be a little bit more inclusive and fair, to use the words out of the opposition party. Thank you.
Okay. Nothing else? Mr. Diaz, this is number two, two-minute minute.
Thank you, Chair. Since I only have two minutes, I'll be as quick as I can. I think whether you're, the people that are in this building, in this room, whether you're sitting around this table, or sitting in the audience, or in the overflow room, know that elected officials like to talk a lot. So I'm gonna try to cut through all of the noise. I was one of the first people that spoke, and I purposely went last, because I'm still confused. I wanted to know the exact details for why we're not following the recommendations from First Steps Kent. I've heard reasonings given, but in my view, in my opinion, none of them are logical. So I'm gonna try to do a rapid round of what I heard. I heard some- I heard some people, some commissioners, say that my voters don't benefit as much from this millage as do other voters. Well, Mr. Chair, I think I've heard you say multiple times in these 12 months that I've sat here, that county government is different, that we are elected to represent the entire county and not just our district. So I don't think that that reasoning makes sense. I've heard people say that increasing taxes is not something that we should be doing now that people are barely getting by and that salaries are not increasing in line with inflation. I think that if we increased childcare and gave more people the opportunity to join the labor force, they would suddenly have much more income, and that would, at the very least, level out, and I think be better off on the other side. I've heard that we have not seen the data that we need to make adequate, informed decisions. I think that data is sitting in the audience now, has given their time to come and talk to us about why this is important. I've heard that the millage might not pass if we do a flat increase in August. Well, I think that if the voters tell us that they don't want to do an increase in August, we have another opportunity in November to put the flat renewal before them, and they can vote on it at that point. I've heard some commissioners say that this should be something that should be coming from the state and not something here at the local level, where it just so happens that in today's agenda, resolution, let me see here, E, is our 2024 federal and state legislative priorities. So if this increase fails, I hope that those commissioners who say and think that this should be coming from the state are prepared to amend our 2024 federal and state legislative priorities when that comes before us in about 20 minutes and add childcare to that document because it's not currently there. So we'll see what happens when that comes before us. Lastly, childcare might not be in the Michigan or the United States Constitution, but in the first line in Article I, it does say all political power is inherent in the people's
-- Are you about summarized up?
About to find out whether it is or not. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so Commissioner LeGrand, two minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I apologize to Commissioner Diaz for no longer being able to be last.
Well, just for the record, I go last.
No, I simply want to bring up an interesting point that Commissioner Coleman made where he compared our situation to Finland, and Finland has great results, and they don't go to school till seven. They also just have a different culture than we do. They have very generous parental leave, they have free healthcare, they have subsidized childcare available based in every city. And I'm not saying that we're going to be Finland or that we should be Finland, but we can't compare our choices to their choices. That's not possible. What we can do is solve the problems that we see before us with the tools that we have to hand, and I feel like maybe we're picking and choosing which experts we listen to because I feel like we've gotten some really good evidence that would support this higher millage, and that a higher millage would be the choice of the voters. So I just put it there that we are able to solve problems and we have the ability right now, and I hope that we do that. Thank you.
All right. So anyone else for a two-minute, second, and last comment? Otherwise, I have a few comments. Vice Chair, minority vice chair, Woodin, two minutes.
I will be very brief, just because I do feel we need to clarify one point because there has been discussion about the fund balance. And yes, there was considerable fund balance due to the COVID delay. I just pulled up our most recently approved budget, which has an estimated year-end fund balance, and which was provided by our own county administration, and the fund balance was estimated to be by the end of last year decreasing from $7.4 million to $2 million. That was in an attempt for First Steps Camp to catch up the services that were delayed. And I do think that should just be noted for the record that I, while certainly there was a considerable fund balance they were sitting on, that fund balance has been spent down, and just want to make sure that that is clear and on the record. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Now have we tucked ourselves out as duly-elected politicians? All right, so bear with me on a couple of final comments, and I will say that most of you already know that my role as the chair in these deliberations is essentially to make sure that they're done appropriately, deliberately, respectfully, and in true compliance with our standing rules. But it also gives me the right to make my own comments as a commissioner with respect to the issues. In doing that, I want to start by first acknowledging all of the members of our community who have taken time out to communicate to us their feelings, their perspectives on these issues. There's no question that these are issues that are significant in our community in Kent County, as pointed out, also beyond Kent County. It is clear that it is an issue that has multiple perspectives. We've certainly heard in public comment, all of you have email and text, and I'm sure you all receive these communications as well. My constituents have communicated to me, some of them adamantly in favor of an expansion or renewal, some of them not so much in favor of expansion or renewal, some of them not quite as nice as Commissioner Green's about, please be careful with my taxes, it's a little more strident than that. So there's no question that if we look across the community, this issue generates a lot of passionate perspectives. But I also want to thank my colleagues. This has been one of the more difficult issues we've had to deal with. We've dealt with others that are challenging, or as challenging, who will deal with more. But I am pleased that you have engaged in this deliberation with respect, even though I know that you don't all agree on the solutions here. What I have learned from talking to all of you, or most of you, at some point in this deliberative process, which has been fairly lengthy with lots of reports and studies and considerations, and opportunities for you to go back and read your own analysis of what data's out there, that everyone around this DS agrees we have issues here. This community has a big challenge in dealing with how our early childhood development goes on, and the impact it has on public health, education, juvenile justice, and the dollars that we spend as a community in all of those areas. We all accept from my conversations that childcare is an issue, a significant issue, a compelling issue. What we don't agree on is how we deal with it. What we don't necessarily agree on is the role of Kent County in that regard, or government in that regard, or early childhood programming in that regard, or how much should we put into this program or that program. I get it, we don't all agree on how to respond, but I submit, we do all agree, this is an So what's our role? I have heard a number of comments about what the commission should do. Should we rubber stamp, send this over to the voters? Do we essentially ministerially check, make sure that the boxes are all there, the language is consistent with the statute, and send it on? Well, in a way, that would be nice because then we can clean our hands, move on, and we're done. But that's not how Michigan law functions. General Property Tax Act makes the commission, the county commission, the responsible entity for purposes of exercising the fiduciary duty to determine what taxes are assessed. In this case, if we conclude in the exercise of our judgment that this is inappropriate, it then goes to the voters. But we cannot abdicate our responsibility to be the gatekeepers for determining what is the appropriate tax. That's just clear. Because when it comes down to it in applying our fiduciary responsibility for everybody in this county, we have to look people in the face and say, this is what we think is right for this county, if you strongly support it, or if you don't. Those that strongly support it, they will readily pay for more tax, I got it. They'll probably write a check to a nonprofit, I got it. But when we say yes to a tax, it's the people that can't afford it, that don't want to support it, that are fighting against it, that we're also saying, you have to write the check. So this is not an easy assessment. This is a fiduciary duty that we need to take carefully, seriously, and thoughtfully because what we say here will be the determiner. So in some sense, I, along with my colleague, Commissioner Breevy, feel a little responsible that we have this debate here at all because I probably have more history with this issue than anyone else around the DS. I chaired that committee six years ago, and I suspect I was asked to chair it because folks thought I would pretty quickly, as a conservative Republican, boot it to the side, and we'd be done. That isn't where we landed. We took a hard look back then. I think we probably met at least 10 occasions. We took information from First Steps. We took a lot of intake from lots of folks. We had study sessions. Most of us read Professor Heckman's studies with respect to the 13-to-1 rate of return that these kinds of programs can promise a community. And we looked at it carefully with that same set of eyes, which is, is this appropriate to ask? Is it appropriate to approve? Is it appropriate to go forward? Is the county the place to do this? Can we responsibly do this? Can we sustainably do this? If the solutions are going to evolve out of this community, is this where they should evolve, or elsewhere? And in that process, I recall going back to our First Step folks and saying, look, I know you're asking for, I think at the time it was half a mil. If we, as a community, approve point 2.5 for six years, can we prove the case? If this is effective programming, that can be done in Kent County, not Chicago, but Kent County. If it can be done effectively here, can we do this in six years at point 2.5 and prove the case? And I recall being told, yes, we can. Okay? It's not our ask, it's not ideal, but we can do it. And so when we came back and said, we recommend we do this, we sent it to the voters, and they ultimately approved, we did it on the basis that we said, let's prove that this programming can work in Kent County. The promises are great. All the analysis suggests not only will this have significant positive effect on individual lives, but it can change public health assessment in Kent County, and it can significantly reduce cost of these key systems like education, public health, criminal justice, juvenile justice. I became a convert. I was excited by the possibility that this programming can really make a big difference in all three of those areas. And so it went forth, and unfortunately, the test we anticipated before we would be able to come back and go back to the community and say, you know what, this works great. We should increase this. The test fell short, and it didn't fall short, in my judgment, because of anything wrong with the programming or anything wrong with First Steps. It fell short because of a pandemic, and a pandemic robbed us of three years of that test. And it wasn't First Step's fault, it wasn't the public's fault, it wasn't our fault, it just was. So the question for me is, well, what do we do now? When we went into this, I believe we made some commitment to the public that this can prove itself very effective, and you just wait, in six years, you'll see. I've looked at the studies, the turn-on investment that is now produced, it's good, it's positive. It's not what we asked in the testing protocol. So do we give the process a pass and say, well, there's a good reason why you didn't turn in your homework? Or do we say, you know, it's very unfortunate, but we still need to prove this before we go to step two? And in my judgment, I think it takes more aggressive, consistent assessment of the underlying programming before we get there. I love this program. I feel passionately that this is going to make a big difference in this county. But I also passionately think that you make these long-term changes by being very careful about building strong foundations. And a strong foundation for this kind of programming, which, as was pointed out by some, is very innovative, it's unique, it's not done anywhere else in this state, probably not anywhere else in the country, maybe there is now, but this is incredibly unique programming and initiatives. But if we don't do it carefully, if we don't build a strong foundation, it will be harder the next time around, and the next time around, and the next time around. So I appreciate my colleagues who are ready to push ahead now with the point 3.5 or point 4.5. I'm passionate that this programming is making a difference in our community and will continue to make a difference in our community. But I would caution against moving too quickly, and for whatever reason, we're back to having to complete this test, and so I am speaking in favor of renewing the existing millage. Let's go forward and prove it. We do have extra dollars simply because the inherent growth of our tax base, and I think I asked the administrator, where is this going? And right now, as you know, tax base goes up based upon rates of inflation at 10% increases. You know, we'll see more money into this process. 5%? I like 10% better, but either way, it will inherently grow. And so at the point of being able to take this programming and show that it can effectively do with more money, I think is the foundation. I would also point out that, you know, as we go forward with this programming and look at new opportunities, we have the capacity to do, as I think Commissioner Hennessy pointed out, we have the capacity to continue to provide supplemental programming. We do that through KSSN. This is not the only initiative that's active here in this community or active in the state. So I am looking forward to being successful with this, I'm looking forward to being able to make this case going forward, I'm looking forward to this being a programming that we are in the lead on for a long time in the future, but I'm going to take it just a little bit slower at this point. That doesn't mean I don't care about all these solutions, it doesn't mean that I don't care and understand that there are big issues here. I would certainly encourage us to continue to advocate elsewhere. I think it actually, the governor's recommendation was $670 million for preschool programming this year. Will she get it done? She has a penchant for getting those things done, so we're not going to be the only ones that are pursuing this. So that's where I land on this. I am a strong advocate for the program, I will support the renewal absolutely. I will also take the second recommendation of the committee, and that is to appoint a task force that is inclusive of the county, inclusive of the commission, inclusive of other stakeholders across the county, for purposes of identifying just how can we, as a community, more effectively address these issues? Is it here? Is it elsewhere? Is it multiple levels of response? So once we get done here, rest assured, I will take that challenge, and I will appoint that committee, we'll get that rolling, and whether it is a year, or two years, or three years, I don't care. When they've done their analysis and they're ready to come back with a credible story and a credible case, we'll take it up. So with that, I exceeded my five-minute rule. Madam Clerk, will you please take the role first on the motion to amend the underlying resolution, which is to increase the rate to point 3.5?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to amend Resolution 25 to increase the levy from point 2.5 mils to point 3.5 mils for the early childhood millage, Commissioners Boujack?
No.
Diaz?
Yes.
Pakla?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
LeGrand?
Yes.
Oliver King?
Hennessy?
Yes.
McLeod?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Teal?
No.
Breevy?
No.
Coleman?
No.
Burl?
Ponstein?
Yes.
Hildenbrand?
No.
DeBoer?
No.
Merchant?
No.
Antor?
No.
Vice Chair Green?
No.
Chair Steck?
No.
Mr. Chair, you Mr. Chair, you have nine yays and 10 nays. The motion fails. The amendment is not adopted.
Thank you. Now if you will take the roll call.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. I would like to request a roll call vote on this vote.
On the new one coming up? Yes. I already anticipated. That's why we did a roll call on the first one. All right. Go ahead and take the roll call on the underlying motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 25, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Diaz.
No.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Oliver King. Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl. Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
DeBoer.
No.
Merchant.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yays, 2 nays. The motion passes. Resolution 25 is adopted.
All right. Thank you. And again, thank you Commissioners for the, for the great deliberation and the debate and the respect. And we're not done with our work on this issue and others yet. So let's, should we take a brief recess at this point? Okay, let's take a seven-minute recess. All right. We will reconvene, the Board of Commissioners meeting, and proceed with our agenda. We are now up to item 8B, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod. Was I too quick? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 26 of today's date, the request to accept burn justice assistant grant through the state of Michigan to reduce community violence coming to us from the sheriff's office.
Thank you much. Is it supported?
Support.
I think it was supported by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on this one? I see none. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 26, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Oliver King. Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl. Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand. DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yays, 0 nays. The motion passes. Resolution 26 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll move to item 8C, and I will call on Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to move Resolution 27, which is labor agreement between Fraternal Order of Police, Labor Council, and Human Services.
And it's supported by Commissioner Boujack. Questions or comments? All right, if not, this also is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 27, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Oliver King. Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl. Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yays, 0 nays. The motion passes. Resolution 27 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 8D, and I will call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move Resolution, Resolution 28 of today's date. It is a labor agreement, an amendment to collective bargaining agreements for park assistant prosecuting attorneys and attorney referees. It comes to us from Human Resources.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Legrand. Questions or comments? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair. Steck. So I just want to, Chair, I just wanted to thank the legislative, not the legislative, the Human Resources Department, collective bargaining, though we want a good, positive result all the way through, sometimes it does get contentious. So I just appreciate all the work that our staff has done in that area and look forward to working our continued relationship with our employees.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see no one else. So Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 28, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Oliver King. Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl. Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand. DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yays, 0 nays. The motion passes. Resolution 28 is adopted.
Thank you very much. Move to item 8E, and I will call on Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 29 of today's date, today's date, 2024 federal and state legislative priorities coming to us from the administrator's office.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Teal. Questions or comments? Commissioner Hennessy.
I am wondering if, under issues to watch, I could just add a friendly amendment, just to add in there, a watch on early childhood initiatives.
That's a motion to amend, right?
Well, unless it would just be accepted as a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment.
Do we have a rule?
Only whatever you need. If everybody agreed.
Well, so who made, you made the motion. It, interpreting it to be, there is at the end of it a list of issues to watch. They're not, they're not position statements one way or the other. They're just issues that we believe require us to be attentive to. You simply want to have a list to say, early childhood initiatives would be on the watch.
Yes.
Is the motion maker acceptable to that?
Um, can the...
Yes, that's close enough. Are you?
Can the motion maker ask if others are acceptable?
Well, I'll have to ask whoever is seconded. Who seconded the motion? Yes. Or, no, you did. Are you accepted?
Um...
You don't have to.
It's on the items to watch?
It's on the watch. That's the request. It goes to the watch.
The watch. So if it's under the items to watch, I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it, too.
All right. Well done, Commissioner. Okay, no problem. It is now before us with that as the added watch item.
Thank you.
Now, any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair. Steck. Not so much a question, more of a comment. I, well, I guess it is a question. I guess I was always under the understanding is that our legislative priorities can change on a day's notice, and that things can be added and taken away, and that what we pass here isn't rounded in stone. That's all we can talk about, because if we're going to add childcare, there's a laundry list of things that have come up since we've done this process that need far more attention than childcare.
So that is a question, I think. And my response would be that the priorities, once identified here, at least by historical practice, are the ones that we affirmatively would advocate for when we go to meet it with our legislators. It can always be amended if the Legislative and Human Resources Committee believes that something should be dropped and/or added. And there is a whole spectrum of issues that aren't on this list at all that staff and Commissioners are also watching and observing, and it may be that they percolate up to further consideration at any time.
Well, thank you, because I was in DC, and the legislature wasn't there last week.
Timing is everything.
You're going to have priorities, but there's no other to talk to.
Timing is everything. All right. Anyone else? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. With that in mind, I appreciate that a friendly amendment was passed to add childcare as issues to watch. I personally think that we need to have much more conversation going forward developing what our priorities are, or not at the state, like state and federal levels. I noticed that per our rules, or on the document for our rules, we can only consider or are only allowed to consider things that would affect county business. I was honestly inclined to make a motion today to add Drive Safe as something to be considered. But I did reach out to our county clerk, I reached out to our county treasurer, our health department, I forgot maybe who else. And essentially, the staff that responded told me that at least when it comes specifically to the issue of driver's licenses, the people who go to the departments are not necessarily affected by having or not having a driver's license. They can still pay their tax bills, they can get services at the health department, they can ask questions to the clerk. So with that in mind, I decided not to make a motion today to add Drive Safe to our list of priorities. However, seeing that our rules do say that items under our federal and state legislative priorities have to necessarily reflect a change, how they would affect county operations and county business, I did draft a different amendment. So I'll be passing around, I'll be passing it around now. This is a motion to amend our 2024 federal and state legislative priorities.
Again, with the, with the others, let's, can you articulate essentially what it is, and then we'll see if we have a second.
Under heading state legislative priorities, in check of following priority as the last state legislative priority, so specifically under state, not federal. And this would make, in this regard, make county redistricting independent. I couldn't read the whole motion, but I'd just leave you to say that there are three ways that I'm proposing that we list as possible venues, either making the Michigan independent citizenredistricting committee responsible for drawing county legislative districts, creating a independent citizenredistricting committee at county level, or just moving, I think the phrase is partisan political advantage, moving that up higher on the list of factors to consider. The Michigan Supreme Court said that because current Michigan law lists a series of factors in order of importance, our county lines currently being county follow that essentially. But I would be, we missed, I didn't mention, there was an article that came out early last week that specifically stated how one, or one party in the county got 12, 21 seats, it was a 27%. The seats were only 50%. So I believe that this amendment asks the state to make sure that when we're drawing county lines, that we are ensuring that those lines reflect the way of voters, kind of how we did so with the state and federal supplies and government. So basically, make that motion out.
All right. I think before I ask for a second, I'm going to, I'm going to rule that under Rule 5.1, this is a motion that if it's appropriate, should be made at the LHR level, since it is an LHR jurisdiction matter, before it comes to the full board, so.
So then just to be clear, this is something that we could add during miscellaneous, say at the next LHR meeting, even if it's not part of the objective?
It, it should be made at the LHR. How we do that at that point, I think is, we can talk about that, but that is where it should start.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
Rule, please.
5.1. All right. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment, given the recent report we had about our legislative priorities and movement on that. And while I'm glad our recent judgeship was approved, and we can expect to get some relief for those courts that are kind of overburdened, raising pay rates is not, and that was the other thing that was approved, is that judges are getting raises, which I'm not saying I oppose, but neither one of those really addresses the stable funding question, and this is a really, we're not the only county, of course, that has a problem with that, but this is a really, you know, serious problem statewide, certainly it is for us, and I would just like to make sure that our lobbyists are being really to the point when they're, when they're following these, these issues. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? If not, the motion is not a roll call vote. It is a voice vote. So all those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. We'll move to item 8F, and I will call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair. Steck. I move item number F, or letter F, 2-22-24-30, the FOIA policy.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on this? I see none. This is a voice vote as well. All those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, please say no. It is approved. We'll move to item 8G, and I'll call on Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to, sorry, to move proposal Resolution 31 of today's date, the codification policy, which comes to us from the administrator's office.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this one? Mr. Coleman.
I just want to express appreciation for picking up long, unrevealed policies and just doing a refresh. I think that's a really good proactive work. So thanks to the administrator's office for, for doing that.
Very good. Anyone else? Not, this also is a voice vote. Those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, please say no. It is approved. We'll now move to item 8H, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 32, revisions to the animal, revisions to the animal shelter fee schedule coming to us from the animal shelter.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose the motion, please say no. It is approved. Move to Item 8I, and I will call on Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the adoption of Resolution 33, Kent County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority from the Administrator's office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wooden. Questions or comments? Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Steck. So I just want to point out, I did highlight the brownfields in my earlier comments. I think maybe a refresher from the admin office on how brownfields work for some of the newer members. I mean, they take depressed properties, fix them up, they get a tax capture for amount of years, but when they return that to the tax rolls, sometimes it's doubled, even tripled the value of when they took it. So it's a valuable tool that's available to counties all across the state. So I just want to point that out.
Thank you. Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. I just, first and foremost, want to echo the sentiments made by my colleague. I'm very excited about this, being able to bring this tool to all of Kent County and participate with our local jurisdictions in a number of ways, particularly around economic development and economic growth and housing. The recent changes in state law that allow brownfield authorities to take a more active role in helping create especially first-time homes or homes that are affordable for first-time homebuyers, workforce housing, and help us tackle the housing crisis is, I think, a real strong opportunity for us to build on the leadership role what we've taken in the last year and a half, and one that I'm very excited we're taking. And so I just want to echo and restate my gratitude to both administration, you, Chair Steck, and the members of the Brownfield Study Committee, Commissioners Burl, Breevy, and myself, for the work we did on that with stakeholders, and to our staff, especially Mr. Spencer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this one? I see none. It is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose the motion, please say no. It is approved. And that is the last of our resolutions on the agenda. So we'll move to Item Number Nine. Item Number Nine involves the fact that our current minority vice chair, no, it is not.
You're right.
Your microphone is not on when you say that. All right.
That recorded in last.
At any rate, Minority Vice Chair Wooden has tendered his written resignation to us as the officer, the Minority Vice Chair Officer, and I have had discussions with him and accept that resignation, but we'll turn it over to you if you have any comments you wish to make.
Thank you, Chair. And just real briefly, so in light of the recent news of my, of current state representative Rachel Hood not running for reelection, and my own decision to seek a higher office, and the significant time that's required of that undertaking, I just feel that the board deserves to have someone who will use that, who sees their officer role as their highest civic responsibility. And as a result, I think this role would be better served by someone else in the position at this time. And so I am tendering my resignation as Minority Vice Chair. I am still staying on this board for the remainder of my term. I take this responsibility very seriously, but because of my appreciation and admiration for this body, you deserve to have a Minority Vice Chair who is going to make that their first civic responsibility. And I am excited to hand it over to another member of the Democratic Caucus. And I'll just say it's been an honor to serve in this role for a very brief, for the last two, near, just a little bit over two years, and look forward to continuing my service with you all for the remainder of this term. Thank you.
Very good. And I will underscore how grateful we are for your work over these past few years. It has been a pleasure to work with you on making sure that this body functions as effectively as it can, as respectfully as it can. And you'll be missed, but we'll look forward to working with your replacement.
You're not completely done with me yet?
No, I know that. It takes more work than that. All right. We'll now move to the election process for a new minority vice chair, and that is under Rule 32C. And I believe it will start with the opening for nominations. Is there a nomination for a minority vice chair officer? Yes. Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. It is my distinct honor and pleasure to place Commissioner Michelle McLeod's name into nomination as minority vice chair. She is currently in her second term. She has proven herself an exemplary commissioner, knowledgeable, thoughtful, a quick study, hardworking, and I think will make a fantastic minority vice chair. And just as she has in her brief period, served on the executive committee as an ex officio member, she also would be the first person of color on this body to serve in an officer position of this board. And given her talents and the history that would be made by it, I am proud to place her name into nomination. Thank you.
Support.
It is supported by Commissioner Sparks. My inquiry is, does this nomination have the support of the minority caucus? Is it a nomination from the caucus?
It is, yes.
And the other requirement is that I must confirm that it has a full majority support of that caucus. So I'll just call through the minority caucus to confirm a majority. We drafted this rule. I didn't know if I was going to say this. All right. Commissioner Baker, do you support the nomination?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Commissioner LeGrand?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks?
Hundred percent.
All right. Commissioner Wooden?
You better believe it.
Commissioner Hennessy?
Absolutely.
Commissioner McLeod?
Yes.
Mr. Pakla?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
All right. It meets that requirement. With that, any other nominations? There are no other nominations. Nominations are closed. It is?
Voice vote.
Voice vote. It is a voice vote. So all those that support the motion and nomination to elect Michelle McLeod as the minority vice chair, please say yes.
Yes.
If you oppose, please say no. All right. Well, congratulations, Commissioner McLeod. I will note that I think it was only a meeting ago that we acknowledged you for being appointed to the executive committee in one meeting. You went from that to the actual minority vice chair. I am looking at my tail.
Watch out, yeah.
Shoots and letters.
All right. Do you wish to say anything at this point?
I would. Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, I know we've been here a long time, so I don't want to take up much time, but I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues for nominating and now electing me to serve as the minority vice chair of the commission. I want to say thank you to Chair Stan Steck and my board colleagues for having the faith in me to operate in this capacity as the MVC for the commission. I'd be remiss if I didn't lift up that I was just appointed a couple weeks ago to serve as the first person of color on the executive committee for the board. And since the commission was created years and years ago, over 100 years, so although it took well over 100 years to get to this point, I'm happy that we got here nonetheless. And so I applaud my Democratic Caucus colleagues for lifting up the importance of representation at all levels of board leadership, and also applaud the board itself for prioritizing it as our county diversifies more and more each day. As a black woman that's worked in predominantly white spaces my entire professional career, it weighs heavily on me that this trailblazing opportunity comes with great responsibility, and I'm ready for it. I want to thank the outgoing minority vice chair, Commissioner Stephen Wooden, for his leadership over the past two years. He's led with grace and collegiality and has paved a great path for me to now step into. Thank you, Commissioner Wooden, for your leadership, and we wish you the best in your future leadership.
All right. Thank you so much. I had the pleasure of meeting with Minority Vice Chair McLeod the other day and spent a fair amount of time just talking about how we will proceed working together, and I look forward to working with you. All right. With that, we move to the next item, public comment. If there is anyone from the public that wishes to address the board with respect to matters that are within our general jurisdiction, you may do so now. Please identify yourself, and you have up to two minutes.
How you doing, everybody? Me shoving my tongue again. So Dee Jones, Passion Entrepreneurs, Black History. Saw what was going to be over, but it's 365 of Black History. It's not just a couple days. It's actually 365. Don't forget that. Your founding fathers stole African history and created a government. Never forget that. You guys are empowered because of stolen history, straight up. Y'all stole our history and created a government, and people smirk and y'all laughing, y'all joking. But people are struggling because of the lack of care, because of lack of truth. You guys say truth. I speak the truth. That's the actual truth. That's the truth. Don't speak about truth, because that's the truth. You guys are empowered because of stolen land, because y'all stole land from Indians. They created a government. Y'all got people struggling. Black people, don't forget that people of color struggle, and they get hit the hardest from every decision that you make here in this county, whatever y'all want to call it, this board. We get the worst end of it. We get the worst end of everything that y'all do, whether you feel it's good or bad. We do. Y'all don't know how it feels to be black because you white. You never know how it feels. You never know how it feels. Don't give me this BS, because we get the worst of everything. We get the worst of it. I can tell y'all how hard I go, but y'all gotta feel me, because I'm tired of bad politicians asking what they know when people vote, when they don't listen. Even with the Artful Fund, y'all didn't even listen to county staff. Y'all didn't even listen to the staff, because y'all feel like y'all know it best. We could walk in any neighborhood in the hood, anywhere y'all want to go, I'll walk in y'all district with y'all. Tired fake people. Listen to the people. That's what y'all ran and served, right? Listen to the people.
Thank you. Good morning, Just.
Five minutes. Is it two minutes or three minutes?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. I know Commissioner Hildebrand has left, but if he will be watching this video later, I wanted to thank him for his invocation. By the way, David, your name means beloved Hebrew name. I want to publicly thank Commissioner Antor for his words earlier. And of course, he knows that I supported and support what he said 100%. And Chairman Steck, I need to apologize. Please forgive me for the distraction earlier today. I will do all I can in my future times here to not allow that to happen. It is Black History Month, and let me share a few thoughts with you. Statistics show that in 2023, the number or percentage of African-American babies murdered in our state was almost 48% of the total population. And the literal population of African-Americans in the state is about 18, 19, 20%. So 48% of murders of children in the womb were African-American. I wanted to share, I'll have to share this some other time, but all the politicians that are growing, stepping up around the country, especially African-Americans, that are against murder in the womb. But let me again remind you of Martin Luther King. How can the dream survive if we murder the children? Every aborted baby is like a slave in the womb of his or her mother. The mother decides his or her fate. Much more to share, but my time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I see no one else. We'll move to the next item, which is the administrative report.
I'll be brief, just three quick items. I did want to thank Commissioner Wooden for his services as minority vice chair. He did approach that with a lot of diligence, and that's appreciated. Although I will, I will take exception. You're already at the best level of government, so saying you're running for higher office, not sure I can go with that one. But also wanted to thank Mayor Bliss, the city commission, city manager. We were able to get a unanimous vote to not appoint a study committee to put historic designation over the zoo a couple days ago, and I think that's very important. I was on point 22 years ago when this came up the first time, and it was two years. It was very costly. And even the state, the state Historic Preservation Office wrote a letter at that time saying, it didn't appear like there was much in the way of historic buildings left to actually justify doing something like that. So at least we're able to clear that out of the way. Our next meeting with the neighborhood is on Friday, and as we work to create a better mechanism for the city, the zoo, or the county, the zoo, and the neighbors, to have productive dialogue and communication into the future. Also, I just wanted to mention, I kind of wish I could have said it when the roomful was here, so I guess I can have a hope that somebody will watch this later. But so many people have the misperception that we have one big pot of money, and that US commissioners can simply spend that money on what's most important to you. We have 40 pots of money. On the 1968 Uniform Budget and Accounting Act as amended, it creates a chart of accounts, and there's different rules for all those different pots of money. So yes, the board did vote to allocate $15 million in hotel motel tax money to the amphitheater. You're not allowed to put $15 million of hotel motel tax into the children of Kent County, as lovely as that sounds. And, and I should also mention, I guess, that hotel motel tax, 95% of the receipts come from outside of Kent County. And so I think that it's important to keep in mind that it isn't one or the other. It isn't a choice of one thing versus another. The way our finances work, it's, many times it's both and, or there's choices you make that don't, I just wanted to say that we need to do everything we can to let people know how county finance actually works, because it's a great soundbite to hold up a sign and say, you chose amphitheater over kids, and nothing could be further than the truth. So with that, I'll stop. It's late.
Thank you, and thank you. All right. Let's move to reports. I have a couple of items, but any other reports from Commissioners? Commissioner Boujack?
Very quickly, thanks, you, Chair. The fire commission met last Friday, and we selected Tom, Commissioner Tom Antor, as our chair once again. I was fortunate to be able to vote for the purchase of a $1 million fire pumper for Caladonian Township, and happy to attend a meeting yesterday where the township board approved that purchase. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Steck. Mine will be really brief. Pension meeting, meeting met twice this week. I'm joined with Lindsay Teal on that, on that commission. We are a fully funded plan. We have assets of $1 billion, 96 million in our control. We heard from our two fund managers that plan our plan for investing worldwide, and listening to them talk. The, one of the gentlemen flew in from London and the other one from Boston. But it's an interesting, challenging world that we live in with a lot of moving parts. And, and, you know, you can criticize a pension plan all you want, but time and time again, if you put an individual investor against a pension plan, if they were doing it on their own, they would make between 4% and 6% less than what a pension plan does. And the reason for that, at least the Kent County plan, is, is that we kind of stay the course. The first thing when there's a crisis, a war, gas shortages, and your stocks are going down, the first thought that goes through the individual investor's mind is that I got to pull my money out, so I don't lose anymore. And then they miss the upside on the way back up. So we have a very conservative approach on the pension board. It was there long before I got on it, but it's a very successful tool. We're considered one of the gold standards of pension plans in the Midwest and are looked to across the country. So I want to appreciate all the work that the staff does. I know they've been asking for more help, but we've got two and a half people, and, and we've got a fantastic board made up of, if you don't know, there's three employees, there's two people from the public, and then two county commissioners. And that in itself is pretty rare on pension boards, that we spread that knowledge out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. I, along with Commissioners Ponstein, Merchant Hennessy, and Boujack, along with staff, had the pleasure of attending the NACO conference last week. And there were some highly beneficial workshops that we all had the opportunity to attend. One that I got a lot out of was a conversation on elective pay and other ways that local governments can utilize some of the federal dollars coming through the Inflation Reduction Act, particularly when it comes to energy conservation for our buildings. And in addition, I did have an opportunity to stay an extra day and meet with Congresswoman Skolton and discuss some of our previously approved legislative priorities, most notably the Grand River Greenway. And I can report that it is a high priority of hers and remains a high priority of hers. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If not, I have a couple of items. First, with the approval of the Kent County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority earlier in this meeting, I had made a determination on who to appoint to that authority. And that is the following: Josh Lunger from the Chamber, Jessica DeBoon from PM Environmental, Brooke Osterman from Housing Next, Dan Wells from Gaines Township, Kim McLaughlin from Wolverine Building Group, and then two Commissioners, Commissioners Wooden and Commissioners Green. Those are my appointments, subject to a motion to approve. Is there a motion to approve?
I move, I move to approve the proposed chair appointments at Kent County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Supported?
I'll second.
All right. It's moved and supported. Any questions, comments? If not, all those that, all those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no. All right. Next item is the Administrator's evaluation process for 2023, which was wrapped up by then Minority Vice Chair Wooden and the prior vice chair of the board, Commissioner Breevy, and myself, to complete that, as I indicated after discussing with the administrator, that the report on that would be distributed to all of the members. It should be on your desk somewhere. If you haven't seen it, look for it. So if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. And then the last thing I have, which is not in here, but under the Parks Foundation, I, as chair, I am, I am authorized to serve on that or to give a designee, and I have determined to sit on the Parks Foundation board. So going forward, I will be on that board. All right. With that, miscellaneous, any other miscellaneous? Mr. Antor?
Thank you, Chair. It gives me great pleasure to be able to talk with passion about something that's not political. Trust me, this is great. I wanted to just mention, I'm very proud of my granddaughter Avery, who as a seventh grader was given a special exemption to run against Division One college girls at Boston University. And she was given that exemption by Nike, because she's been doing so well in middle school events. So I got to go to the event, and I was seeing girls from Alabama, Penn State, Ohio State, Arizona, Auburn, all these Division One women, and there's my seventh grade granddaughter running with them. And I can't tell you how proud I was. It was just amazing. She finished in the top third in the 3000K, and then she took 10 seconds off her personal best in the mile. And I am just so proud of her, and I'm happy I had the opportunity to be able to talk about her a little bit. Thank you.
Very good. Any other miscellaneous? Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick note that we did confirm the Early Childhood Millage account does have between 7 and 8 million currently. And I also
account does have between $7 and $8 million currently. And I also just wanted to make a quick comment. Former minority vice chair Wooden mentioned it was just over two years that he served in that capacity. But as, if my recollection is correct, that was the tail end of all the CARES Act stuff and all of the ARPA allocation work. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that while it may have been two calendar years, it was sufficiently more than that, given those circumstances, and express my thanks.
I think it was a decade's worth of work. Anyone else? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So what, well, your past VP, Chair Wooden, had mentioned the national conference. Part of my other duties, too, I'm in a second-year term of the Board of Directors of the National Association of Counties, adds some meetings, but the speakers seem to be a little bit more higher level. We had a speaker from PepsiCo there, and they seemed to be wanting to double down on recycling education. I reached out to both speakers, and I'm kind of in contact on maybe on what partnerships and money's available. It was pretty impressive what Pepsi has set up for their goals to not just reduce plastic, but eliminate it. So I'll keep you posted on that. And I think I copied Alan, one of the emails.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to express a brief note of appreciation for the county clerk and her team, and all of the city clerks that are working currently with the early voting around the county and around the state. Looking forward to three elections this year. I'm sure four elections this year. That's right, yes, the May 7th, yeah. And just expressing lots of appreciation for all the hard work there.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? If not, just a couple of items. First, there is pizza in the back, because after we're done here, we'll take a recess, and then we still have a work session, folks, after this. Ben Swayze has been patient back there to give us a debriefing on the, on the new Parks Master Plan. So that will be after, after pizza, though. It's pizza first. And then just finally, again, I want to express my gratitude to all of you in how you behaved, how you handled your deliberation over the course of a very difficult issue. I think that we presented what we do here very well in front of the public, and I know that we don't all agree necessarily on that issue. But I think we do all agree that we have a responsibility to govern fairly and to govern legitimately and respectfully. And we're not done with this issue. We still have work to do. So thank you again for that. And with that, I will call on, no, I won't, I'll call on Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the chair, to Thursday, March 14, 2024, 8:30 a.m.
All that support, say yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.